You've got a... Anybody who has a computer on the Zoom link, if you could make sure you do.
Okay, I think we're ready. It's 7:01. I'll give you a three-second countdown. Three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Scioto Township Planning Commission for January 24th, 2022. And we are using a hybrid platform this evening. And for the members of the public who have joined us by video or phone, you're muted, and your microphones will be open when appropriate. I want to say that we're using this hybrid format going forward. All planning commissioners must be present, must be present to vote and be attending the meeting. Okay, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment during public comment, and that will be for anything that is not a public hearing this evening. So that would be anything that is not pertaining to Heron Farms. And then we do have the Heron Farms of public hearing this evening. For the public hearing, typically, the process is that we hear from the applicant, we hear from our consultants, and then we hear from the public who are present, and then the public on their computers, and the public joining by phone. So that's sort of the process. So with that, we will go on to roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present, and Commissioner Culbertson.
Present. And our planning commission consists of six members currently, and we have four present this evening. So we'll move to adoption of the agenda, and I believe, Mr. Luwan, you had a comment on one of the agenda items.
Yes, the final item on the agenda which we...
The flag and yolkum?
Yes, flag and yolkum. It is a minor amendment, but it should say consideration of minor amendment in PUD. Actually, quickly, of Scioto PUD.
Any other comments, changes on the agenda? May have a motion to approve the agenda as updated.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further comment? Okay, all those in favor of adopting, of the motion for adopting the agenda as amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we have no presentations requested this evening, so we'll move ahead to public comment. We get citizens wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not in the public hearing portion of the agenda or seek information on any other matters. Such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesman of an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. So if for those that residents, for those that are in the room, there is a sign-up sheet, one for public comment and another one for the public hearing. So you just sign the appropriate sheet if you want to address the Planning Commission. And for those online, if you just take your name before speaking. So, public comment this evening. I will then open for public comment at 7:05.
Okay, there are a couple of hands up for the public.
Is there anyone in the room that wants to address, just during, this will be for anything other than Heron Farms?
What was that again?
Anything other than Heron Farms.
Okay. My name's Zeke Branniger. I'm a resident of 7525 Marshall Road, and this is concerning the development they want to put on the Smith Farm off of Marshall Road. So we want to again respectfully, we want to again respectfully voice our concern with the approval of this PUD retirement community and request it be denied. The area in question sits next to and is a part of a large agriculturally zoned area. The development in question will change the rural character of this area and will have a negative collateral impact on our family's ability to continue our dairy farming practices, which we have been actively doing on our farm for over 100 years. We believe approving a PUD and allowing 600-plus residents to reside on the 100 acres next to our farm will create conflict and impede our ability to safely run our family business. Allowing this development will change our future, and in essence, the development slash developers are allowed to determine our future, becoming an uninvited and unwelcome partner in decision-making because of the limits that 600 new neighbors will want to place on our farming practice. I find the approach of suggesting a strip of land allocated for a solar farm at some future date a ridiculous countermeasure or concession to the density of houses they have requested for the majority of this property. It comes across as pandering to this committee. Although we have the right to farm, 600 new neighbors will certainly be unfamiliar with our farming practices, and ultimately, we will be the ones who will have to face these challenges and deal with the future conflict. While there is a perceived need for senior residential facilities, there is also a need for a presence in agriculture, and there is certainly a far more fitting setting for such a facility. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the Planning Commission?
Just a quick question now.
Yes.
Are we supposed to address Heritage Woods after the guy speaks on it, or are we supposed to get up there and speak?
Oh, for Heritage Farms?
Heritage Woods.
Heritage Woods? Oh, no, right now, yeah. Right now would be the official presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is David Spicer. I reside at 525 Baker Road, which is right next to I-94 on Baker Road. Is there any way you could pull up the proposed picture of the road that's going to go into Heritage Farm, Heritage Woods, on that screen?
No, the applicant will do that. I can't, I'm sorry.
I can't?
I cannot.
Okay, I thought you had it up last time.
The developer had it up last time.
Okay. In the mid-fifties, the entrance to 525 Baker Road, my house was straight out of the attached garage. When I-94 was built, a bridge was constructed on Baker Road to go over I-94, and a service drive was built for the three houses as a means to get to Baker Road. At that time, and now, it is an inconvenience. Now Heritage Woods is furthering that inconvenience with their planned Boulevard entrance. It is only going to erode the value of our property. We have been trying to sell our property since 1998 and have been under contract twice. I am considering purchasing a 40-foot tag along trailer trailer, and now I wonder if it will make the U-turn on the Boulevard. I don't think it will. Will a fire truck be able to make the U-turn? How much more time is it going to be added to their response time to drive the extra distance? And the U-turn also? Cars could be blocking the driveway, waiting for the light to change. Same with the EMS, as we all know, seconds matter in urgency. We don't need another deviance to the entrance to our houses. Never in my wildest dreams would I ever think I would be made to drive one-eighth of a mile or the equivalent of 660 feet to some, on somebody else's property, then make a U-turn, drive 660 feet back to where I just was then, to make a right turn, and drive 400 feet to my house. We find this approach to be totally unacceptable without the purchase of our houses and our property. What compensation are we going to get for the inconvenience of this driveway? Why are we being sacrificed for the duller's gain? Thank you for your time, Dave.
My name is Eugene Kett. I live at 609 Baker. That would be the property directly to the south of the access road property. Couple of the things that weren't mentioned were if a semi-trailer with a 52-foot, a semi-truck with a 52-foot trailer would be able to make the U-turn on the Boulevard to head back to our property now as residential or as the property is slated for mixed use and with commercial intent. We're waiting on the results of a certified appraisal as to what the property is worth now with commercial intent and what it would be worth with the Boulevard, and people having to access the commercial property off the Boulevard, making the U-turn, and then making another 90 into the, into our property. One of the things that was mentioned in a private meeting this past week would be a deed in access from the access road running south onto our property, which would make accessibility onto the property as a square more acceptable for somebody buying it for a commercial intent. Would stand to reason that the property would be worth about half of what it is now with the Boulevard and having the inconvenience of turning around. These are just a few of my concerns. I voiced the rest of them before. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bruce Branniger. I live in 8451 Marshall Road. I respectfully ask the Planning Commission to deny the Heritage Woods development. This development does not fit in with the current master plan in zoning, and it is not a transitional... I don't know what to say, but anyways, it'll set a precedent in the township to encourage more development if you guys let this go through. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else present who would like to address the Planning Commission on something that is not Heron Farms?
I do have a question, though. These questions that I ask, when will they be answered?
Well, the petitioner, the applicant, is coming back this evening, and he says he has responses to the issues that were brought up last time. So we'll have to see what they have to say.
There's a couple of hands up. Yeah, Becky Deanhopper. So, Ms. Deanhopper, I'm going to click the button to join the meeting. So you now have the, you have the floor, Ms. Deanhopper.
Still muted.
But you are muted. Still muted. I'm going to let Ms. Deanhopper come back. And next up is Julian Kay. Julian Kay, I'm going to click the button here, and you now have the floor.
Good evening. I'm having a hard time hearing, in fact, I can't see the Planning Commissioners or Doug Luwan anymore, and it's really hard to hear. There you go. But now I can see you. I can't see your lips move, but the volume seems to be down. I just wanted to say that the last Planning Commission meeting, I was on Zoom and I spoke, and I was cut off. I continued to speak during my third, three minutes, but you could not hear me because I was muted. So I just wanted to let you know, I am now recording from my, my computer to make sure that I will have my three minutes when I'm ready to speak during the, the public comments during the, the hearing. Thank you.
We apologize if you were, you obviously were cut off. I don't know what happened with the technology, but if that does happen, please let people know that you can raise, please raise your hand again and say, I'm sorry, I was, I was cut off, because we do want to hear everybody's full, their, their, their full thoughts. Okay? All right.
Here we have a few more. One, T-A-U-L-A-G. That's what we're showing. So I'm going to click the button here. Paula, you now have the floor.
That's me. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I kind of find, I just want to say the two gentlemen that were, or maybe it was just the one, about the, the farming practices on the Marshall Road, Baker. You know, there's some irony that we're buying, we have this parks village, and we're buying up farmland to preserve it. And here we actually have real farms producing food for the last 150 years. And we want to, and believe me, farming, I've lived near farming. They've got manure, they're going to have their tractors, and there will be complaints. But there is an irony in that, and I think this whole PUD thing is just to allow developers and commercial people, and, and I'm very disappointed over the years in the hat, the way the Planning Commission and their direction, just like all businesses were supposed to stay on Jackson Road. Well, now they're coming down Z. And they're making life difficult. We don't change the speed limits to accommodate residential people. We're going to be paving, asked to be paved roads and sads for developers. And I'm really against all of this. And I think it's very ironic that the Planning Commission is doing this. Just like the hatchery, they give them some conditional letter that they promise they'll do something to protect the Heron Hatchery. But there's nothing specific in the conditions that are, are set forth exactly what the developer has to do. And I appreciate your job, but I, I think you're taking the township in a direction people do not want. And thank you very much for listening to me. I'm a Scioto resident, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're going to try Becky Deanhopper again. So I click that button. So, Deanhopper, you are still muted. I'll mute.
And just for those, if you have difficulty figuring out how, how to unmute, sometimes if you leave the meeting and come back, it'll give you an option to join by audio, and that might help. So we'll look, Becky will look for you again.
So Rob Pattinson is next, and Mr. Pattinson, you have the floor.
Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township. Just a technical point. I just want to let Doug know that there is a switch on the panel where you were fixing the cameras earlier tonight. There's a switch on there that will turn on the microphones on the, the boom microphones that are in front of you. And, and if that doesn't work, you are the farthest from the microphone that's hanging from the ceiling. So you will have to speak up very, very much so that we can hear you. You're very, very soft. Thanks, King.
Thank you, and keep, you know, if you do find that you have trouble hearing anyone, maybe we can, you know, maybe you could raise your hand or, or put it in the chat. Thank you.
Yeah, a few more hands coming up. We have Pam Boyd. So, Ms. Boyd, you have the floor.
Hi, Pam Boyd, Scioto resident. There is no chat. So we can only raise or lower our hands or, or speak when you have unmuted us. So that's, so just to give you a heads up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Chat's disabled, okay.
I'm going to try Becky again, because her hand is up again.
Okay.
Maybe speak up.
Yeah, you need to just project.
I am going to try Becky Denhopper again. So Becky, please unmute if you are able. Obviously, they have some technical difficulties.
All right, so Becky, if you would like, you can email planningcommission@scitotownship.org, and your, your comments will be made part of the record. So that's another option for you.
Yes, and that is as of right now. Let me check real quick. Oh, we have, it's like Marty, Martha Mayo is trying to raise her hand. There we go. So Ms. Mayo, I, I saw you trying to raise your hand, so you have the floor if you'd like to speak during public comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I spoke to you before about the whole issue of health, safety, and welfare responsibility of the Planning Commission, and my hope that something like this would be in a focus section of the master plan. Obviously, it didn't, the master plan, but I didn't raise it early enough. It's my own fault. However, I would like to see it as kind of an addendum to the master plan, but I also recognize that the sustainability project is exactly what I was asking for, something that looks to the health, safety, and welfare of Scioto Township in the long term. And I hope that there will be a short overview of the results from your project, which can be attached to the master plan, but also is short, relatively short and readable. But this project has a long-term focus, as we know. We're looking to impact on the township as a result of climate change. But we have a short-term issue here in Scioto Township, and I want to bring that up because it directly focuses on the health and safety issue, and that is the dioxane plume. It's growing regularly, and we are monitoring it, and that's a good thing. However, it's continuing to grow, and I think it's going to affect the ability of people in the township to build in that area. And I'm hoping that the Planning Commission will consider establishing a special zoning district related to this plume because it is a health and safety issue, and that you, the special district would surround the borders of the plume and forbid construction of dwelling units within that special district until the safety from dioxane guaranteed. I know that's a big calling. Nobody is really sure about it, but I don't see the point of going on building in the area that is to be impacted by the dioxane. We should just not continue to build until we know that we found a, a solution to this problem. It is something that is of, of impact to the people in the township and to future residents. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands up for the public comment section of the agenda. So I think we can move on.
Okay, thank you, and I have to apologize. I jumped over the communications and correspondence. I do want to note that there were emails from Aaron Cole, Daryl DePestal, Skip Adams, and Ann Striker. After comments that were received from the Planning Commission were posted. So those will have to get incorporated, as will any others that come in this evening. All right. Any other correspondence that planning commissioners want to raise? Okay. Then we'll move on to our business section.
Do we need a motion to close public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Thank you. We need, may have a motion to close public comment?
Move the public comment to be closed.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and we close public comment at 7:23. Actually, 25, let's say. Okay. Then we'll move on to our business session. We do have an advertised public hearing, and I'm getting, the public hearing is CU number 20002, Heron Farms Agricultural Commercial Tourism Business, and I will declare that public hearing open. And then we will be, the applicant will present first, and then we'll, we will hear from our consultants, and then the public present and the public online. So if the applicant would like to come forward, please.
Do we sit here or what's?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
I have a presentation, so I'm on Zoom if I'm able to screen here.
Yeah, we can absolutely.
I don't know how good this is.
Which, which computer is this?
I'm going to write one for the record.
Are we okay to start? I'm Brian Herron. This is Lori Herron. We appreciate your time tonight and everybody who attended to seek information on our application. to seek information on our application. What we'd like to do will be pretty quick because we've had past discussions to just summarize the current state of our application, our discussions with our neighbors, potential restrictions on the conditional use and other relevant topics related to the vineyard and the winery and tasting rooms. So, you know, our goal really overall with this project, you have already heard people say that they don't want PUDs going in with houses and traffic. We're sitting on 70 prime acres right between Dexter and Ann Arbor on a main road, a loud, busy road that's very suitable for development. That's not what we want to do. We live there with our five kids and we're trying to find the right use for this property. And that's what we believe this is, and we'll talk you through that. So our goal is to basically redevelop from the farm that we have into a vineyard and winery to produce locally developed wine and to bring the community together to taste and to sell that wine as a winery. If you've ever been to a winery, part of the wine experience is buying the wine in person and visiting that location versus maybe going on the internet and seeing a million wines and not really knowing what's out there and why you should buy certain brands. So the objectives for us in this project is to promote and maintain local farming through the open space provision that's in the Township Master Plan, maintain an agricultural heritage and rural character, and to encourage this new agriculturally-based business that will contribute both to the economic conditions and to the winemaking in Scioto Township as well. Just some quick facts. The wine industry is pretty big. More than 175 wineries in Michigan, 5.4 billion in economic impact, 47,000 state jobs from wineries and craft beverages, 3,300, this is, what's the, 3,375?
I said acreage.
That's acreage, sorry. 3,375 acreage. And even through COVID, you know, the message is resonating for local business and local wine. So one of the things you may hear from residents tonight is why a winery, why in Michigan? We've invited some experts who have wineries and work in the state of Michigan and support wineries who we hope will speak tonight to explain that it is a thing. It's a viable thing with the right pieces of the business put together and it's not far out there. In fact, it's sort of up and coming. So Heron Farms is an existing operation. We lived there, purchased the property in 2015. It currently is farmed with a mix of hay and winter wheat. I know there's been some questions about that. We're happy to present some tax information showing farming income. However, because of the FOIA request, we're going to want to do that in a way that protects our own personal information. What we are planning to do is replace some of the farmed crops right now with cold hardy grapes that have already been ordered for 2022. And they'll be operating under Heron Estates and Vineyards, which is just a DBA for Heron Farms, which is our existing legal entity. Do you want to just talk a little bit about the vineyard plans, Lori?
Sure. I mean, I've been taking courses now for a year and a half. I'm pretty serious.
Where can you speak up?
Sure, yell.
Sure, sorry.
Because the closest mic is hanging right there.
Okay. I've been doing this now. I've been in classes with the Vesta program. It's a national school that's online that connects with all of the agricultural areas. MSU is the big one here. I have access pretty much like internationally to, you know, different things in terms of grapes and learning about viticulture and analogy. I've done a soil test. I've performed a soil test on the property. I'm doing, as my husband said, cold climate grapes. So they are viable, you know, out in this area. They're very vigorous. They make good wine if you've, you know, if you've had any Michigan wine, any, you know, like Marquette and stuff. So everything mentioned here is out of the University of Minnesota where they hybrid regular bit of viniferous. So we do have 2,100 vines going in in the spring. In May, they're being delivered. We have receipts to prove it. It takes about three years on average to get mature enough grapes to make wine with. I've been making wine in my garage basement now since I started classes. And I'm really serious about this. Like I've taken a big trajectory from being an occupational therapist a year and a half ago. I'm pretty submerged in this and this is what I'd like to do. So I welcome questions regarding it as best as I can answer. Again, we have a panel of people, you know, that can also help with those questions.
Okay. As far as the promotion of the wine, we've talked with many wineries. We've visited many. We even have some owners of wineries who may be speaking tonight to talk about the importance of being able to sell wine onsite. It's one of those products that just has to be sold onsite to be viable. So as far as promotion, we're going to promote through onsite samplings based on when there's harvest and new releases, a wine club, onsite tastings, and then advertising through direct mail and social media, which will redirect people back to the onsite portion of the winery. The application for the special use is really related to a 33 by 50-foot barn. That's, everybody's driven past it. It's sitting right on Dexter and Arbor Road, pretty much on the right of way. It's been there for over 100 years now. It's starting to fall apart a little bit, but what we'd like to do is pick that up and move it, move it back into the property where it's well buffered, add 20 feet onto the end to support restrooms, put in a septic field and a well. And it's on a sandy loam area, so it should be no issues with a perk. Wrap the barn in structural insulated panels to make it soundproof. And we'll talk about that a little bit later in terms of sound. But sips are basically styrofoam and wood on both sides that are seamed and glued together. And if you want a soundproof house, you could use these sip panels to make them. I have a lot of experience with soundproof construction. Even our home is ICF construction, which is concrete core and styrofoam edges, which we've also contemplated for this use, but sips seem more appropriate. 36 parking spots. Based on the size of the facility, we think 150 max occupancy. Like we said, the importance of it really is to be able to have a viable vineyard and winery, which we think this space fits well with. And we think in Scioto Township between Dexter and Arbor, it's the right demographic. Success factors for us, we see that, you know, wine businesses overall have proven to be successful. There's currently no vineyard and winery in the community that we're entering. So I understand this is maybe a new thing for you guys and we want to provide every information we can and be a part of the diligence process. We do believe that the local population is going to be very interested in the product and the experience and building, you know, a good product, a premium wine, something that fits well with our area. Lori and I personally, you know, we have, I have experience, you know, in construction and running businesses. Lori has experience with wine and agriculture. So we think we're a good fit to be successful in this project. And absolutely, cold hardy grapes will be successful. We've already tested the soil and we've already talked with people from Sand Hill Crane and Flying Otter and other vineyards, sorry, vineyards in this area who have done just that. And then there's a sustainability approach as well, which Lori's done a lot with in terms of the IPM program and making sure that we are sustainable and the practices that we follow. So there's four nearby wineries and I think we'll have some visitors from, some are all of these, depending on who could make it online tonight. 32 acres for Flying Otter in 2005, eight acres from Sand Hill Crane, which a lot of people have heard of, 33 from Smoking Barrel and 25 from Youngblood, all of which have a tasting room and say that it's an important part of their operation. In terms of diligence, we've definitely had a lot of communications with the township and now with the neighbors. I think the neighbors are now starting to open up and communicate with us more, which I think is a great thing. We understand that the paramount concern is sound. And we understand why. I understand that there's party barns in Scioto Township. This is not a party barn. And we'll talk about the restrictions that we've self-imposed on our application, but we understand that's a big pain point. And I think the only way that sound can be addressed is that any music we would have inside, it needs to be inaudible. The standard should not be 65 decibels or five above ambient. It should be inaudible. And I did some research and I looked around and places like Miami County where they have nightclubs, the standard is inaudible outside the building in those cases. And so we believe it should be inaudible at the property line, which is a very simple test. Can you hear it or can't you hear it? And many of you came onsite when we did a sound test and we had kind of loud music at the tasting room location and we couldn't hear it. But it needs to be more than that. It needs to be inaudible. So we are committed to that and we're actually committed to having that be in the conditional use. We understand traffic is a concern, but Western Consulting did do a traffic. It was like a light traffic study comparing it to other potential uses for the property. And they found it to be less impactful than other already allowed uses. We also talked with Andy in the fire area and he replied and said that based on our plan and our condition of putting a fire suppression system in, he didn't have any additional concerns. We also looked at the fire lane and access and things like that. So when we applied for this, we imposed three conditions of use. Now, there's some additional requested from the neighbors and I'll share with you those. One is that we wouldn't begin construction of the barn until after we planted the grapes. And we have no issue with this. In fact, we probably won't even be through this process before the grapes are in the ground. But that is one condition. Another is that it can't be used until the first harvest. The second condition would be that it's an accessory use and the products that are done there are wine and wine-related and that we would have to prove that. And the third condition is to specifically exclude weddings. And we understand wedding barn, wedding pain point. If you talk to some of the other winery owners, they don't really like weddings. It doesn't really help sell wine or promote the brand. And we understand that. So we've taken that off the table now. Our neighbors have asked that maybe that be extended to wedding showers and wedding receptions. We are fine with that. That is not an issue. So we had several reach outs to neighbors. On 10/25, we mailed out letters to neighbors. It was eight of them that we had previously noted had spoken at these. And they were personal letters just requesting communication and details. We shared it on our application. We didn't have any responses from that. We reached out again on 12/27 with 24 letters that were much larger packets with USPS, with our business plan. And we did actually get some responses. And I think you'll probably have some people speak about our interactions from that point. And we did get some feedback from that. Feedback which unfortunately we can't incorporate into our application, but as a Planning Commission, if you were to craft restrictions and we've emailed some suggestions from the neighbors, they could be incorporated in. We have seen neighbors who previously spoke against us say that it seems like a good idea and with the right set of restrictions, this could be a good thing. And like I said, the biggest thing is music. That's what we keep hearing. Everybody's worried about music. So what you see in front of you, and I printed you guys a copy, is I talked to one of our most outspoken neighbors and we sat down and we went back and forth. And I said, what would it take for this to work for you? And we crafted up a set of restrictions. So it was our three restrictions to begin with. It was also amplified music being inaudible to neighbors, which we absolutely agree to. It was that we would do a sound test when the building is done, which we would do anyways. So we would absolutely agree to that. It was that we would have continuous sound recording at the nearest borderline and those recordings would be available in any case of an issue. And that if a neighbor had two complaints within a year that was verified by a policeman or a third party, that we would lose the ability to do amplified music. We were okay with that. It was shorter operating times, which we were okay with. And when we applied for this permit, we left the operating times kind of vague because we're three years out and, you know, we're just trying to figure out what we need to do. But we're okay with the shorter operating hours. They asked for additional bufferings. Again, no problem. Maximum capacity is 150, which we had already stated. They asked that if any of our marketing materials were inconsistent with our conditions, that our permit be revoked. We're okay with that. We're not going to advertise weddings because that's not what we're doing. And then the only exceptions would be we do a Fourth of July fireworks. We'd like to still be able to do that. So there's obviously music and sound after 9:00 PM, but the community generally supports that and it's contention on Scioto trustee approval every year. And then if we wanted up to two harvest-type events, we would do a public hearing and ask the trustees. So these were all conditions asked for by the neighbors. We agree to them. I don't think they impose any real restriction on us running a winery and a tasting room. So we're completely okay with that. As far as the regulations, the 36149D, we feel like we are in compliance with what the zoning sets out for. They said 10 acres and we're 70. Access to roads. We're significantly larger than the buffer. We have off-street parking. Operational information is all in the permit. We've already stated that the music will be way below the 65-decibel permit requirement. We live there. We're supervising it. If ever you were to find a place in Scioto Township that is appropriate for a winery, it's probably our location. It's on a busy road, which can be loud. It's right next to the city and it's got a lot of space around it. And you have applicants who are willing to agree to conditions like completely inaudible, which we think is manageable. Looking at the Scioto Township Master Plan, we feel like it does fit with the master plan, which is up there and it talks about preserve open spaces, natural features, and farmlands. The Mill Creek subarea is the quadrant which you're in. And it talks about, you know, rural development pattern here on River Corridor being important and regional greenways that be preserved and enhanced. The best way to preserve this property is to allow an agricultural use that has a minimal impact, in our opinion. So we want to thank you for your opportunity to allow us to present this. We will always open the feedback from the neighbors. And I'd just like to leave this saying that we're open to restrictions and conditions. And we've said that from the first time we arrived here. If there's something that needs to be done to have the neighborhood be more supportive or the township, talk to us about it. We're very open. So that's it from us.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go to our planning consultant next.
Thank you. So this is a reaplication of the, the Planning Commission will remember of an application that was actually recommended for denial at the May 24 regular Planning Commission meeting. At that time, the motion was made to deny the request. The Planning Commission did not believe it met the standards for special land use approval and specifically with regard to the agricultural, commercial, tourism section of the ordinance. It was specifically noted that the business, you know, the farming activity of the business had not been established. So there was some concern that a facility, agricultural, commercial tourism facility was being proposed without the grape vineyard yet being planted. So the applicant has tried to address these. They've resubmitted it to be heard in front of the Planning Commission. By the way, this request while was recommended for denial of the Planning Commission, never went to the Township Board. So this, there was no formal action by the Township Board. So technically, this item was never actually denied by the Township. It was just recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. So this represents a reaplication to the Planning Commission with new information. The applicant has gone over that new information. Our memo of November 30 goes over some of those items. The applicant has tried to address those concerns. They've just gone through what those concerns are, so I'm not going to go over each one of those. But they have tried to address the concerns and notably with regard to the lack of a vineyard. I have agreed to delay any use of the wine tasting facility until after the first harvest of grapes. So that would address the issue of the agricultural business onsite or the agriculture onsite not being there and having this business. So that would be a condition that the Planning Commission could place on us, as well as the number of a number of conditions that the applicant has put forward. So, with that, I do also understand there's been a number of email correspondence sent to the township up until today, you know, this afternoon. So, I will say this to the planning commission, there are four of you here tonight. The applicant has provided their case for how they think they've addressed the issues that were raised back in May. That all being said, because of, because some of this information has, you know, we received relatively late, you know, as of today, information from the public and some response from the applicant, it certainly wouldn't be out of the question to postpone this item to allow you, allow commissioners and our office to provide a more robust response to the, to the issues raised both by the public and how the applicant tried to address those. So, I'll just throw that out there. Some of you may remember, it used to be practice of the planning commission to not take action during a public hearing so that we could try to address public hearing, you know, public hearing comments and comments from the applicant. And I would just remind everyone, all the commissioners that that is certainly a viable option available for you tonight.
And would you, just for the public, go through what the process is with a conditional land use and site plan and so forth? Please.
Yeah, so this, some of you may not have been with us back in May when this was last discussed, but this is what's called a conditional land use in Sciop Township's zoning ordinance. All zoning ordinances are similar in this regard. In every zoning district, there are uses permitted by right. Those are uses that if you can meet the minimum standards found in the zoning ordinance, a municipality, in this case Sciop Township, is obligated to approve it. There's no discretion. Conditional land uses are one of those times when the township has discretion to review for a decision. And those discretion points have to do with primarily how this use would impact not only the township generally, but specifically the neighboring properties, traffic, if there would be negative impact. And so, conditional land uses are those uses that might be permitted in some locations, but not always in every location. So, it allows the planning commission to have discretion. The planning commission may place conditions on approval. Those conditions don't necessarily have to be agreed to by the applicant. If the planning commission believes that the standards found in the zoning ordinance can be met by certain conditions, you can place conditions on a request. And in addition to that, there is a section of the zoning ordinance that is called, hold it up here. Agricultural, commercial tourism business. And that's one of these special land uses within the ag district. This property is own agriculture. In Sciop Township, agriculture allows obviously agricultural uses and large, small, single-family residential is the two primary uses. There's also a number of special land uses that could occur within the agricultural district and agricultural tourism businesses are one of those uses. Part of the reason why agricultural tourism businesses are allowed in the zoning ordinance is to provide people who are either farming the property or have large tracts of land to be able to help preserve that rural character that the township is desiring of and is talked about in our master plan. And it gives a property owner an option other than developing the property in homes or in some other manner. So, this was, you know, purposely put in the zoning ordinance to allow some flexibility for folks who are farming and/or residents and property owners that have large tracts of land that are trying to preserve the rural character of that property. So, I mean, that's a little background. Hope that helps. This will, the planning commission, by the way, is a recommending body. So, regardless, I kind of alluded to that when I started. Regardless of what happens tonight, whether it's a recommendation of approval, a recommendation of denial, or a recommendation of approval with conditions, or tabling, it could be tabled as well, this will, this will go on to the township board. The planning commission is not the deciding body. This will go on to the elected officials. The elected officials will make the final decision. So, this is a recommending body only. And this happened a couple of meetings ago with the Knights of Columbus project just to inform the planning commission. The same exact language is found in our special land use standards as is found in the PUD section of the zoning ordinance, which indicates that a motion has to either approve, deny, or approve it with conditions. A tie vote, I know there's only four of you here tonight, so a tie vote wouldn't, does not go on to the township board. There has to be some sort of action to the township board. So, we'll have to play that one up here to see how, to see how this goes.
And then there are other steps after the conditional land use, right?
Yeah, and after the conditional land use, the applicant will actually have to submit a site plan. So, this is not the site plan. This is just the township trying to determine if this use is acceptable in this location. And if it's determined that the use is okay, granting the applicant a conditional land use, they would have to come back with a site plan showing. I understand they want to move the barn, so they have to show the new location of the barn with some detail. They'd have to give more detailed information on parking and traffic and circulation, stormwater detention if that's required, you know, all of those things that go into a site plan. So, there's a few steps that have to occur before this would become a reality. But right now, we're just at the recommendation, planning commission recommendation step, whether that's approval, denial, approval of conditions of the use itself. So, we're really just talking about, is this use acceptable for an agricultural tourism business as described by the applicant? Really detailed, nitty gritty site plan stuff will occur at the next stage.
A question, Doug. If it is in fact a two-two tie, does it go on, since we're a recommending body, does it still move on as a denial at, at the township board? No?
We have to come up with a recommend.
And if it doesn't look like, yeah, if it doesn't look like there's a way to get past an impasse, I'm not saying there will be tonight, but if it doesn't look like there's a way to get past impasse, probably an appropriate motion would be to postpone until they've got, you know, additional planning commission members.
All right, thank you.
So, there would need to be, if there's a motion to approve that's denied, then there need to be another motion to deny.
Yeah.
You have to, we have to, yeah, work until we get a motion that we, that care.
Yay or nay?
Yeah, all right. So, then we'll open it up to public comment and we'll begin with those that are present here and then we'll move online. So, if there's anyone wishing to address the condition about Heron Farms conditional use.
Hello, I'm Erin Cole and I have to say, my husband and I are kind of late coming to this party because we purchased our property in Bridgewood Hills and are preparing to break ground on new home. So, and some of this information that has been presented is all new to me. It'll come out as I go through. But our property is on Oxbow Court and given the proximity to Heron Farms, we're probably the most impacted by any of the decisions the committee will make because we actually share a property line with, with Heron. Our primary concern is one of noise, which has been addressed more recently than, than I was privy to. But most specifically amplified music. Ironically, the main reason we chose to move and build in this location is to enjoy the peace and quiet that we couldn't find in Ann Arbor, where we currently live. We understand that Heron has outlined investments it will make in an attempt to dampen and monitor the noise generated by amplified music at its events. However, having attended numerous functions at venues like this, we do believe that effectively monitoring, policing and enforcing policies around this will be at best difficult, if not impossible as a practical matter. Setting aside all of the soundproofing, monitoring and measuring technologies, if we can hear it from our property, it's still a problem. Now, you did address it, the inaudible. I like, I like that. I do agree, I do think though, it's going to be hard to monitor. We're also having difficulty understanding how noise generated by amplified music can really be controlled in a structure the size of the Heron barn. With a stated expected event capacity of 150 people, attendees will undoubtedly have to go in and out of the barn, meaning the doors will be open frequently. So, even though the barn itself is soundproof and windows are closed, the doors are going to be open and close, opening constantly. On a related note, we really don't see the value in attempting to define the nature of events that can be held at the farm. Rather, we believe that the focus should be on a manner in which the events are conducted. By way of example, we'd rather see a peaceful wedding ceremony than a loud graduation party with amplified music. We're supportive of entrepreneurship and growing local businesses, but not to the detriment of the surrounding community and its residents' ability to peacefully enjoy their own property. On the bright side, we believe that there is a win-win here for all parties involved through compromise and the elimination of amplified music as a stipulation in the conditional use application. Again, we are late coming to the party. We didn't get anything in October. We did get something late in December. But anyway, thank you for your consideration.
And welcome to Sciop.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Bill Bernard. I just have one question. And Brian was in your packet that come out was at the very end, that you may mention your kids weren't, you didn't see him have an interest possibly in this venture that you're into down the road. So, if he does sell it 15, 20 years down the road, do you guys retain the jurisdiction that's written up for him if he gets approval? That's my question. So, the new owners would have to abide by what is set out for him, correct?
Yes, it's, so conditional land use does run with the land, so it's not, it wouldn't just be the Heron's. But any condition that the township were to place on this would follow future land owners as well. And we do keep track of that. I've had a case about a year ago about a daycare facility that was actually approved in, I think, the late 70s. And we had a copy of the conditional land use permit. We allowed the daycare to go on under new ownership, but they had to follow the conditions that were placed on them in the late 70s. So, we do keep track of this and to answer your question, yes, it would.
Okay, that was one of my concerns.
Is there anyone else present who would like to address the planning commission?
Good evening. I'm Andrea Streeter. I reside at 6793 Dexter Ann Arbor Road, not quite across from Mr. Heron's property. I've been a resident since 1977. I also sent you a lengthy email that you should have gotten today. So, I'm going to just kind of quickly go over a few points. He said he addressed part of the ordinance requirements by mowing and baling hay and straw. I don't quite see that as an operating farm, but that would be up to the planning commission. The vines are not planted yet. Part of the ordinance states that it is to promote what is already being grown. So, that still has not happened. Also, the fact that 50% of the product that he grows on his, part of what he serves. So, my contention is, he says nothing about growing crops other than grapes. Where will these food pairings come from? Obviously, not 50% of them are going to come from his growing them. That's another point. Being a wine tasting barn venue, I don't quite understand why there has to be amplified music, why there should be 150 people present, or that I know in the beginning, in his business model that he sent to us, at one place, he says it'll be closing at 8:00 in the evening and 9:00 in the evening. Then another couple sentences down, he says, however, it may expand with the growth of the business. And then he says, it will be amplified music till 10:00, but people still in attendance until 11:00.
30 seconds.
It's in, it's in his plan, right in his plan, his business plan that you were handed. So, again, 150 people till 11 o'clock at night, even with no music. There's going to be voices carrying, sound carrying. I don't quite see why, if this is supposed to be a wine tasting venue, that these kinds of numbers need to exist. If it is a.
Thank you very much. That's the three minutes.
All right, all right. I suppose, there's supposed to be dinner events, not parties.
Is there anyone else present that would like to address the planning commission on Heron Farms?
Hi, my name's Ashley. I am the first house on the east side on Morrison Drive when you first turned down. I appreciate the kind of change in the demographic, more agricultural focus than kind of wedding and party scene focus. My main concern is, you know, I live a little bit farther off, so my main concern actually isn't the noise. My concern is the traffic. You know, when you're coming down, if you're heading west, heading into Dexter, the traffic getting down that hill with Morrison right at the end of the hill can be extremely difficult to get in and out right there, especially during school hours. So, my concern is what will this added traffic look like for us who live down Morrison Road to get in and out, you know, to access our homes? So, I'm concerned about the traffic, but not only that, with the traffic right there and wine tasting, are we going to see an increase in, you know, drinking and driving, uncontrolled traffic? You know, what could this look like for us with traffic? That's really my main concern. Other than that, I am in total support of agricultural businesses. I think that if you put this couple miles farther down the road away from my house, you would hear no complaints from me. It's just right where it's at with where we live. Unfortunately, with traffic and noise, it'll be a big change for us. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? All right, we'll move to the online folks.
Couple hands up. First one I see is Mr. Jeff Hershey. So, Jeff, Mr. Hershey, you have the floor.
Hi there. Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity. As we consider this issue, again, it occurs to me that we're all trying to anticipate the consequences of permitting this use. You know, the applicant wants to be a good neighbor and may well be. They've reached out to discuss this more comprehensively than previously. However, I and many others are uncertain of the quote, "impact on neighboring properties", which is central to what's being considered. So, attempts are now made to thread a needle without really knowing if it will work because a business plan, no matter how well crafted, is not part of a conditional use permit. We try to guess what stipulations will be acceptable and more pertinent, enforceable. How does the township enforce? What if it is not quiet? What if there is too much traffic? What if it's sold to a commercial enterprise that does not want to be a good name? What if it adds ancillary uses, a petting farm, place structures, temporary buildings, tents that are not anticipated? tents that are not anticipated but not prohibited? What if lights are added that are intrusive? What if drinking and driving occurs, drunks wander onto adjacent land? We don't know, and we can't anticipate all of the nuances that might arise with the proposed use, and the township is not equipped to enforce. Because a conditional use runs with the land, we will not have effective tools to address future issues, if any. My simple suggestion for the planning commission to consider is modeled after the nearby Sylvan Township. Specifically, the planning commission have the authority to require that a special land use permit granted for this business may be reviewed annually by the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. The evaluation will review any violations of the conditions, other zoning violations, whether the violations have been resolved or are recurring, and complaints by neighboring property owners. If violations of the special use permit continue, the approvals may be revoked by the planning commission. We all try to anticipate what might happen. If it does happen, we don't have a tool to remedy it. That's why an annual license seems to me to be a more appropriate tool. If it's operating as intended, as stated, without any of the violations, without violations of any of the conditions, it can continue for a long time. If they start to run afoul or they sell it to somebody, then it can be revoked. Thanks for considering that.
Thank you.
He was thinking.
I'm going to give Becky Denhofer another chance. I see her hand up again. So Ms. Denhofer, I am looking you. You are in the meeting again, and you are muted. On the, I will mention on the agenda, there's also a call-in number. So Ms. Denhofer, if you can't get through or having technical difficulties with your computer, you can also use the call-in number that's on the agenda, and that is also possible. Because I believe you are having some technical difficulties. So we're going to move on to Julian Kay. Julian Kay, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Speaking of, I'm sorry, there's an echo. I'm going to turn down my volume. I sent an email earlier regarding some points. This, going back to the, the planning commission had tabled or denied, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, based on the fact that the business has not yet been established. And according to Michigan Tourism Advisory Commission, the IRS, and Sciop Township Ordinance, there must be an established business, established farm. So the Herons do have a nice idea for a winery. However, there is not an established vineyard. There's no wine being made, there's no grapes being harvested. So this is jumping ahead of the game here. And what I see in this plan is really, it's a party barn, it's an event barn, and possibly a winery. Because even after the vines are planted and there's not a viable crop to make wine, and remember, it's not about growing grapes to have a grape tasting event or barn, this is about a winery. So the wine must be, it's not just at harvest time, but the wine must be made on land, in order, on their land, in order for it to become a winery, and then to have a complimentary and accessory to the primary agricultural land. If this is allowed, it's a premature conditional use, and it is setting precedence for any 10-acre parcel owner with a plan in hopes of having a future established farm to have events, even if the future crop is not viable or fails. So you're setting, if this is approved, this is setting precedence for the rest of the township. Secondly, this has been brought up over and over again, Sciop lacks enforcement. We have all of these ordinances, we have conditional uses, and we know, based on the two event barns on Sciop Church Road, that those complaints have fallen on deaf ears for 13 years now, I believe. So do we really need to set Sciop up for another issue? So first of all, we got to go to the basics, and it has to be an established farm producing product, and which could be grapes. So please deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Kat Weber. Kat Weber, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kat Weber. I live directly next door to the Heron Farms at 6510 Dexter and Arbor Road, so I'm probably one of the closest neighbors. In support of this approval, I support entrepreneurs. I'm a small business owner myself. I strongly believe that you have a right to use your own property. The Herons have spoken with the neighbors in the area, they're very transparent with their plans. I heard them say tonight that they are open to suggestions and to working with the community, which I think is a beautiful thing. It does meet all the requirements for the conditional use permit in Sciop. They could go with the farm stand version, which would, you know, eliminate a lot of these rules, and it seems like they're going above and beyond to have a place where people can taste the wine. Personally, I've traveled the world, been in Napa in France, at wine tasting venues and vineyards, and never seen 150 people in a location at one time. I think that's a maximum capacity. This will bring people into our communities, it will create a nice place to take visitors that come to see me from out of town. It's a well-thought-out plan, and I think they're being good neighbors and offering a gathering place for our community to enjoy. I don't love the idea of having pesticide spraying next door to my house, and I do see that they've looked at methods like sheep and other alternatives, and I would appreciate that being considered highly, because I don't want chemical sprays where I organic garden and have my pets next door. As far as the noise, I think they've done the decibel studies, and hearing the noise, I'm certainly not worried about it being the closest neighbor. I listened to construction noise across the street all summer long, and I heard Ms. Erin Cole say they're about to build a house right behind me. Do they have to follow the same noise guidelines? Because I don't want to hear construction noise, especially early in the morning. The hours, I don't think that they would conflict at all with school buses and the traffic here on Morrison Road, because it's talking about Thursday through Sunday in the, you know, afternoons and evenings. And then I just, I think it's a great plan, and it will bring jobs and tax income to our community, and I'm in full support. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Darryl Depestal. Mr. Depestal, you have the floor.
Yeah, can you hear me okay? I got a question before I start my three minutes. Doug, could you, just a logistical question? When you have a conditional use permit, does that supersede the ordinance, or does the ordinance supersede the conditional use permit? How do the two play together? Can you address that?
Well, a special land use or conditional use works alongside the ordinance. A conditional use permit does not grant any variances from the ordinance. So the zoning ordinance, all the provisions still apply. So that by, you know, a request like this does not grant any additional noise or traffic or parking, they still have to meet all the current standards. So this does not grant them anything additional or extra than anybody else in the A1 district could get. It would just simply grant them the use if it was approved.
Right, so for instance, if the conditional use had a lower decibel limit or a lower volume limit than the conditional use, I'm sorry, than the ordinance, would the conditional use be the enforcement mechanism, or would it actually reflex back to the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
To that point?
Yes, it would be the conditional use condition.
Okay, okay. All right, so let me start my three minutes now. So my name is Darryl Depestal. I'm at 6821 Bridgewood Hills Drive, Sciop Township resident, homeowner, and current resident for the past three years. Similar to Erin Cole that presented earlier, I too share a property line with Mr. Heron. But my wife and I built our house three years ago with the intent of making Sciop our home. We have three kids, and so obviously, I think it's clear, people understand, you know, the noise concern, right? I have submitted a letter for my attorney, and I stand by that letter. However, I did communicate in the last 48 hours with Mr. Heron and discuss some of the specifics that could, or the conditions that would need to be addressed, and I still have some questions that remain. And as far as like what's been currently submitted in the packet, I don't support that. But I do believe that if there were put forward enforcement mechanisms that are evidence-based, meaningful, and automatic, based on those conditions, that could be supported by state and local laws, I would be willing to continue that conversation. Part of the problem in this process is sometimes I have questions, and there's not a mechanism for me to approach the township to have a better understanding. And then I'm left to guess, or I have to hire attorneys and try to figure things out. So a lot of my reservations, frankly, do result from the township's track record and its inability to mitigate the detrimental and hazardous conditions associated with the party barns, Ms. De, in the valley. We have repeated violations without meaningful mitigation, that's well documented. That gives me very serious concerns about the conditional land use permits. Again, I don't fault Mr. Heron for what he's trying to do, and as we talked earlier, this could be perpetuity, so it could be somebody else. It's the township. I hold the township accountable. The township has to do better. This wouldn't even be an issue if we had good mechanisms for enforcement. So I welcome the opportunity for this to be tabled or denied in its current form. If it is tabled, I'd be open to having further discussions about meaningful, evidence-based conditions that can be enforced. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. We have Kristin Hosmer. Kristin Hosmer, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Hosmer, 17593 Chautauqua Trail. I am a former planning commissioner and zoning board member of a rural community that does have a lot of agricultural businesses. I do realize the predicament that the PC members are being put in here tonight. Public hearings are a part of the process. And what I want to talk a little bit about is some of the language specific to your ordinance. The PC is responsible for determining if the applicant has met the standards for agricultural, commercial, tourism businesses. Included in your zoning ordinance is language regarding cider mills, wineries, corn mazes, processing, and storage of value-added products. You also have some conditional, conditions of approval, with the discretion of the planning commission to review the harmony, compatibility, utilities, public welfare, public services, and whether or not a conditional land use, as the applicant has put forward, is in compliance or in congruence with your current master plan and development plan. And I would like to add at this point that another party's bad actions or lack of township enforcement are not necessarily grounds for denying this application. The conditions for approval are laid out in Part 36-224 of your ordinance very, very well. As well, I would like to point out that conditional uses are not setting precedents. Each property, each applicant must be looked at separately. I would like to add specifically out of your zoning ordinance, the preservation cornerstone, a farmland and open space ordinance that you've developed. It is a wonderful ordinance, and I absolutely commend you for developing that piece of your ordinance. You, as planning commissioners and trustees, the trustees of your township, have declared the following sentence: "The township is a desirable place to live and work and visit in large part due to the presence of farmland." Your master plan has set out a plan to preserve farmland. This is a 70-acre farm. This is actively being farmed. This is over 100 years old. The farm was there first. The farm, as it's pivoting and expanding and changing the way that it acts, should not have to be asked to conform to the new next-door residential neighbors. It should be exactly the opposite, that they should be asked to conform to it. Michigan is a right-to-farm state. Your ordinance also has the language promoting agriculture and developing new markets for local agricultural products. I can guarantee you that wineries and vineyards are here to stay in Michigan. I am one of 175 wineries in the state. I urge you to move forward with approving Heron Vineyards Estates with additional conditions that meet the requirements and requests of the neighbors. Thank you.
Next up is Pam Boyd. Pam Boyd, you have the floor.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a Sciop resident. First off, I'm excited for grapes. But this continues to ignore the basic fact that this farm does not yet produce grapes as its crop for its event barn. If you grant his proposal, number one, this is a cart before the horse. In the future, all others will use this as an example as to why you should grant someone else the same right. That's a concern. As we all know, gardeners know the weather and the conditions, the weather has a mind of its own. Giving permission before this crop has proved itself to be able to live is reckless. How do you know that their farming experience will be enough as they learn? Are you going to bank on a new business succeeding in the first, second, or even third year? What happens in Mother Nature brings a cold snap that kills the tender young plants. Please deny this request at this juncture. Thank you.
Next up is Christina Feist. Christina, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Christina Feist. I'm actually a resident in Heron Farms, one of the neighboring properties in Dexter. I'm personally actually very, I'm really happy about this proposal. I'm glad to hear it's an agricultural business instead of another housing or business development in the area. So like Sciop Township, Dexter also takes pride in its rural character, and a vineyard in the township really aligns with this character. This property, it's beautiful. It's well situated with easy access by the community members. And the Dexter and Arbor Road location, it really lends itself well to positively impacting our community because of that access to my surrounding towns. I really love the idea of being able to step outside my home nearby and visit a tasting room, and to learn about all the different wines and how they were created here in our community. A tasting room adds a lot to the charm to the proposal, and it also allows the community to participate and support local businesses. Regarding noise, I personally hear more noise from the trains that go by in our neighborhood, as well as from the road traffic than I would expect to hear from this space, especially with the commitments that's been made already by the Herons. And I expect that the conditions that would be set on this property would also help with that would be set on this property would also help with that concern. I've been also impressed with how Lori has immersed herself into educating herself, not only in winemaking, but also in how to understand her land, knowing which varieties would be best suited for this region, irrigation needs, pest disease. While wine is the outcome, getting to that point is clearly a significant commitment from her, and it speaks to her dedication to the success of this business. Finally, both Brian and Lori, they're members of this community, and they've made really great efforts to reach out to their neighbors and to take their feedback into account. These are the types of business owners that have my support, and I really wish them the best of success, and I really hope that they're able to continue pursuing this dream of theirs. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next up is Anne Streeter. Anne Streeter, you have the floor.
Yes, hello, can you hear me? This is Dennis Streeter. Thank you. Living on 7869 Syo Church Road, I like to say inconveniently located between the event barns that exist already. And while I think that a winery in the township is an admirable venture, and one that certainly supports the guidance of the township directive and agribusiness, I think the thing that we would want to raise is some personal experience through events that can be tied within these types of ventures, and if Mr. Heron was to curtail some of those, I think you have a viable opportunity to add a business into the community. From personal experience, unfortunately, no matter how well you guard against noise, even hearing people speaking at events like these three hundred yards away can be somewhat continuous over the course of an event, much more than just a train passing down the railroad track or a loud vehicle going down the road. And these things go on for hours when events are tied to them. We also see that the influx of traffic, as one of your residents pointed out, can be somewhat pretentious as well, especially when you have valleys and hills that are near a road crossing. We have a couple of those situations in our area also, where accounts of people nearly avoiding accidents have happened on a regular basis. And I guess just speaking in general, having been in agriculture, while I appreciate the enthusiasm of the Herons, a year, year and a half, two years of education certainly doesn't necessarily prepare you for all the events starting a farming operation. Going back three generations in our family, I can say that we learned a lot over that period of time, and it seems just a little premature to perhaps begin issuing conditional land uses for something that hasn't even taken fruit yet, pardon the pun. That's my comments, and appreciate your time, and we would recommend tabling this proposal until further information and probably more experience with actually seeing the results of the vineyard were achieved here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Rob Pattinson. Mr. Pattinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Doug. Rob Pattinson, Syo Township. First of all, Doug, I've got to remind you that you've really got to project because you are quite far from the microphone and you're really, really quiet. And I like the idea of the winery, and I fully support the Herons. My concerns are with the township. Until the township has enforceable, and the key word here is enforceable, ordinances in coordination with the sheriff's department, it has no business and no right to approve these sorts of uses. The Herons have made this application while the people on Syo Church are in the middle of a thirteen-year nightmare of party barns and event barns, where unenforceable ordinances and ignorance on the part of the sheriff's department on what they can do to help these people is going on at the moment. And until the township fixes that, they have no right to approve these sorts of uses. Thank you.
Next up is, probably can say this incorrectly, Alex B., we'll say that, how's that? So Alex, you have the floor. But you have to unmute.
Great. My concern is with the noise level. I'm all for wineries, I'm all for agriculture. However, even their proposal states a decibel level at a seven-foot distance from the venue of sixty-four decibels. Sixty-four decibels is a sound of a conversation held at moderate levels. Sixty-five decibels is a threshold between moderate and loud. So at the location of the barn, I anticipate by doing a simple calculation, that there we'll be using sound levels approaching eighty-five to ninety decibels at the location of the barn. That is the signature of a party barn with a rock band playing outside. So I think their proposal is actually a proposal for a party barn, not a wine tasting room, and based on that datum, I am recommending rejection of this proposal.
Thank you.
Next up is Paul Ag, P-A-U-L-A-G. I spoke during public comment. So you have the floor.
Yes, thank you for listening to my opinion again. And I watch a lot of board meetings and have lived in Syo for twenty-eight years and watched different businesses, and things change, and I think there's great concern, I think somebody put it right, is that we already have party barns, that the neighbors, I've seen these poor people, right, be upset, we have drunks on the road, well, West End Grove, maybe we'll change now, restaurant at the corner here of Zeeb and I-94. But I can tell you, having had someone hit me on Wagner Road near Miller, an elderly woman, and it took the actual, after a 911 call, because she was elderly and I was more concerned about her actually, and it took her and my neighbors, so we wouldn't be by the road, and we had a Washington County Sheriff show up, ask me if I would drive the older woman home, did not issue her a ticket, and I bet you if I called for a robbery, and I live actually not too far from the fire department, might show up here quicker. But I think there's no enforcement, and until these, and then they sound like wonderful people, I don't need, I've been to wineries in Europe and in California, Canada, all over, and why does there have to be any loud music at all? Because most of the time that I've been, and you can see how Napa Valley changed when they allowed Skyways and all these different things, that's supposed to be agricultural land, and we're losing it here. All you have to do is look at the corner of Zeeb and the Myers, and the parking lot over there continually looks like a trash dump, and I'd like to see that enforced, as the cleaning up the trash along the boulevard. Anyway, thank you, I think it should be denied.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down the list, next up is Bob Utter, U-T-T-E-R. Bob, you have the floor.
Thank you, this is Bob Utter, 3402 Chase Road, Adrian, Michigan, in Raisin Township, Lenawee County. I own and operate the Flying Otter Vineyard and Winery, and I just wanted to speak in support of the Heron Farms' desire to create another vineyard and winery in southeast Michigan. It's a growing agricultural activity, and it benefits all of us who have a vineyard and winery to increase the attractiveness and the draw to the area for, to help create a successful agricultural business. We just recently celebrated our tenth anniversary as a winery. So the cold hardy varieties, wine grape varieties that we grow are well-suited not only to survive, but to thrive in our climate, and they make some excellent wines, and it's highly desirable, on my behalf and other wineries in the area, that we become recognized as an excellent wine-producing region. I've heard, you know, all these comments, and it seems to be focusing on party barn versus tasting room. You know, the two aren't the same. The wine business, I fight this problem all the time, even with my own local township when it comes to buildings or everything. You know, the inspectors want to come out and start applying the rules that go for a dance hall or a lounge or something else. No, it's a wine tasting room, it's not a party barn. Our neighbors are some of our very best customers, our neighbors that bought our property love to come over and enjoy a glass of wine and a sandwich and an evening in a beautiful, quiet location. So again, I would encourage you to think of this as a viable agricultural activity. The winery and its associated tasting room are just necessary parts for a small winemaker to have a successful business.
Thirty seconds.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. I believe Tom Smith is next up. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Good evening, I am Tom Smith. I am an extension specialist in agriculture and agribusiness with Michigan State University. I reside at 1460 Stillman Road, Mason, Michigan. In my role as an extension specialist, I work with the wine and grape industry in Michigan, as well as on a national basis, and I've had the pleasure of interacting with Ms. Heron in a class that I teach called Integrated Pest Management. Part of the program she mentioned, which is Viticulture and Ecology Science and Technology Alliance, or VESTA, which is a program funded through the National Science Foundation for online grape and wine education. I think that speaks to the seriousness of the Herons in pursuing this as an agricultural venture. I also work with other grant activities in the state of Michigan, one of which is focused on workforce development in the wine and grape industry, and it has two components. One component is to create a 4-H viticulture program. 4-H is the youth component of extension, and we are focusing on youth from fourteen to nineteen years old. Because wine, and more particularly vineyards, are rapidly growing in Michigan, there is a tremendous need for skilled labor in that area. I'm pleased to acknowledge that the Herons are interested in creating a 4-H club as part of their operation, and along with that, the second part of this grant is to look at apprenticeships for the wine and grape industry. I wanted to address a couple of issues that have come up. Ms. Weber talked about the use of pesticides, and the class that I teach, as I mentioned, is Integrated Pest Management. The beauty of the grapes that the Herons will be growing are twofold. First, they were developed at University of Minnesota for cold hardiness. Secondly, they were bred for disease resistance. That doesn't mean they will not have any disease issues, but compared to other grape varieties, they are extremely resistant to our common grape diseases. Ms. Boyd mentioned the concern of grapes being adaptable to this area, and I think I'd just address that because these grapes are actually grown in the upper peninsula of Michigan. And then lastly, let me just echo what Mr. Utter said. The discussion here is about a tasting room and a winery that would be part of an agricultural operation, the vineyard. It's not about a party barn, and if you've ever experienced Michigan, the wine industry in Michigan, we're consistently in the top ten for grape production and wine production. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, make sure I get everybody here. Looks like the next one is Emily from the Michigan Wine Collaborative. Emily, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you for visiting this issue tonight. My name is Emily Dockery at 1620 North Edwards, Kalamazoo, Michigan. I am the executive director of the Michigan Wine Collaborative, and echoing a few things that we've already discussed tonight, the Michigan Wine Collaborative is in support of this Heron Farms project. The Michigan wine industry is a $5.4 billion industry, which employs over forty-seven thousand people. As Tom Smith just said, Michigan ranks in the top ten grape and wine-producing states consistently, and wineries in the state have experienced an over 1,000% increase since 1991. The growth potential is exponential. The Michigan Wine Collaborative works to support this industry by promoting, marketing, and developing it, and the mission of the collaborative is to enhance the sustainability and profitability of Michigan wine grape industries, and especially to support our growers and winemakers. The Heron Farms proposal serves this mission and the local economy perfectly. A huge focus for the collaborative and the Michigan wine industry moving forward is to work to expand the footprint of Michigan wine to southeast Michigan, a region with huge agricultural and commercial opportunities for vineyards and wineries. We hope in this pursuit, we will be able to add to the economic impact of grapes and wine within this state. In addition to any economic impacts both grapes and wine could have for the local community via a new vineyard and tasting room, site would be ideal for educational and workforce development purposes. We are currently in the process of launching the first-of-its-kind 4-H viticulture club as a key piece to the Michigan Wine Collaborative talent pipeline. This pipeline will serve to create a sustainable recruitment source for the Michigan grape and wine industries. The project will encourage youths to explore careers in viticulture through hands-on experience in local vineyards. It is our intention to launch this project in southeast Michigan as a testament to our commitment to bring Michigan wine country east all the way to the Detroit River. The Heron Farm could prove to be an essential site for educational and commercial vineyard activities. In addition, focusing on cold hardy varieties in this vineyard could be a historic move as many of these innovative and experimental varieties will surely prove to be important in the history of viticulture and winemaking in the state of Michigan and the Great Lakes region. Getting as many vines in the ground as possible will do a lot for the evolution of cool-climate winemaking in lesser-known wine growing regions such as... These vine selections will also provide excellent insurance for crop yields and can be used to make high-quality premium wines. When considering this vineyard and winery location, it's important to consider the positive economic, educational, historical opportunities that will accompany it. Southeast Michigan is ripe for viticultural growth and possibly... Southeast Michigan is ripe for viticultural growth and possibly the sixth ABA in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to do something. Just saying, I'm going to explain something here for a minute.
Okay.
I don't want anyone to think I'm trying to not allow them to speak. But it looks like everyone on here, that hands are up, have spoken at least once. So what I'm going to do, there's a little button here that lowers all hands. So I want to make sure if you have something new to say, I'm going to lower all the hands, which I'm doing right now. So everyone's hand, all the hands just went away. If there's something new and you just forgot to put your hand down, please raise your hand again, and we will try to call it. Okay, we have a couple of hands, one new, one old. This might not be old, though it's Ann Streeter. It may actually be Ann Streeter and not her husband, so I'm going to click that button. So Ann or Dennis Streeter, you have the floor. But you have to unmute yourself. I remember where the handraise button is. Ann or Dennis Streeter, I'm going to come back to you in a moment. And there is a new hand up, Tracy Bradish. Tracy, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to first note that I did, in fact, send comments to the commission, albeit late on Friday, both to the commission and the Board of Trustees with regard to the updated proposal. So if you haven't looked at them yet, I encourage you to do so. And my comments focused on, or questions focused on, the relationship between the commercial use of the barn and the winery, specifically with the requirement that 50% of revenue from any event come from crops or products grown on-site. And I posited something like, oh, so if I buy $500 worth of wine and then bring in a fully catered meal and a band and a bunch of bourbon or something, could I continue to have that event while the vineyard could claim that the $500 that I spent on wine was 100% of the revenue and therefore would meet the requirement? I sent that question to the commission and also to Brian and Lori. And Brian and Lori replied that, no, 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 they do not want to do that. But that's an important point that I think concerns a lot of us, which is the connection and intersection between the usage of the tasting room and the actual vineyard. So having that conversation, I think, is important. The second thing that I want to point out is that someone who spoke earlier, I think her name was Kristen Hasmer or something like that, made a comment to the extent that the neighbors could be the ones who have to justify why somebody shouldn't be able to do something. And I found that a little disingenuous compared to what the whole concept of public comment is. And so I hope that everyone will continue to consider the neighborhood impact as important. And the last thing is, I want to echo Jeff Harsh who said earlier that we're dealing with the unknown, the unanticipated, and sometimes we won't know until after things are actually in process before we know they don't work.
Tracy, we just lost your...
Still have me?
Okay.
Tracy, we can't hear you, although it looks like she's trying to. I see a little speaker movement.
Hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the last point, I'm sorry, is that, you know, Jeff Harsh, he made a comment about we're dealing with the unknown and the unanticipated, and we won't know until things actually happen. And I have to say, I agree with that because I live on 2249 Morrison Road. And way back when Bridwood Hills was just, you know, a glimmer in somebody's eye, I was among the people who had concerns about what Bridwood Hills would look like. And Jeff and the others at Bridwood Hills and MABD worked through things with us. And since then, we've learned to live with what those changes are, even though they were unanticipated at the time and unknown at the time. So I appreciate the idea that we don't know until we know. Sorry, I heard the buzzer, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, I see Ann Streeter again, so I will try to have this work again. So Ms. Streeter, you have the floor. You are muted. You are muted on our side, so we cannot unmute you. So we will move on. And if, you know, if you raise your hand again, I'll alert the chairperson and she can make a determination on that. And then there is one other person spoke before, but Bob Utter's hand is up one more time. So we'll... So Mr. Utter, you have something new? That would be great.
Well, yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something that Tracy just said. Heron Farms would be obtaining a small winemaker license from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. And then the tasting room is a permit under that license. And a tasting room permit will only allow the sale of wine that is produced through that small winemaker license. So no other outside alcoholic beverages whatsoever can be allowed in the tasting room.
All right, thank you. And then we do have a new person, new hand, Pat Stein. So Pat, you have the floor.
Hi. I'm actually an old person. I got disconnected and had to reboot. So can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I hear a lot about the unknown, and there is a lot of unknown. But there is a known, and that is that CIO Township does not enforce any infractions on the permits that they issue. And there's a community on the south, let's see, it would be the southwest side of CIO Township, and that would be the CIO Church area for the party barns. And that community has been living in hell because of the events that go on at those party barns that CIO Township does not enforce. So I do not believe that any permit has ever been revoked by CIO Township, at least not in the last 10 years that I know of, where the holders of the permit did not comply with the ordinances and what have you. So if you're not going to enforce a permit, I do believe that this board, or this committee, should not grant a permit to go forward to the Board of Trustees. I think it would be irresponsible. I think you are setting up a community on the Dexter side to go through the same misery that people are going through on the CIO Church side. So I think it's nice that others have come forward to speak in favor of the wineries that they own or part of. But CIO Township is unique in that permits, the special-use permits, they're basically not enforced, not that I know of. And I don't want to see another community be put through hell. The problem lies with CIO Township's lack of enforcement, and that's where the problem lies. So till that's remedied, I suggest that they decline the use of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I see a new hand, Kathleen Brandt. I think that's a new person. So Kathleen Brandt, you have the floor.
Yeah, she keeps asking. She needs...
Hi, this is Kathleen Brandt. I'm a CIO resident. I wanted to talk about the other property that people are referencing, the Friddick Farm, and the problems that have been going on there for some odd 13 years. I have been interested in that property and the enforcement. So I went down to the Township Hall to read the entire the entire history of those parcels. So it started out as one barn, and then they came back and they asked for another barn. And then they came back and they asked for tents. And then they came back and asked for a pavilion. And so there was never any denial of any of those requests. And we hear lots of hurt and pain from the people that live in that area, which is, it's tragic that there is absolutely zero enforcement. As I understand it, these properties are supposed to have 50% of their revenue coming from the farm itself. And I see nothing in the ordinance to audit that, to enforce that. So if you look at the Friddick Farm property, I believe they grow wheat or hay in their farmland, but their vast amount of revenue comes from those party barns. And if anybody looked at it, there's no way that it's a 50-50 split. You don't make that much money from hay or wheat. And these people have expanded their operation into December. So they started out with a timeframe that was summer-ish, and they continue to come back to the Board of Trustees and got expansion, expansion, expansion. So what I'm hearing from the people that are most directly impacted by this is not... They're not opposed to growing grapes. I don't hear anything about the acreage that they intended. I hear everything is concerned about this becoming an event barn. A lot of these speakers are supporting the wine industry in growing grapes, and that's fine. But the folks of CIO are not questioning that. They are questioning what events are going to be allowed here. So I just want a little aside, I'm now on the Flying Otter Winery webpage, and they have a section here for upcoming events. And it said, "We will resume live music and other activities in May 2022." So let's consider that what would live music be like in that property? How many acres are you going to farm? Maybe you sell off some of that property, and it really does just become a 10-acre event situation. And so I don't think you have controls in place for a lot of this stuff, and it's really not fair.
If you could finish up, please.
Is that my time frame?
Thank you.
All right, we have one last hand up. Jillian Kaye is going to up again. Jillian, you have the floor.
This is actually a technical thing. Doug, Ann Streeter has had her hand up. And there's, she's under computer. The iPad is not working, so she's trying with her computer.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Well, yeah, we've tried to let her in several times. I will try once again.
Okay, thank you.
She's in twice. I see a hand up, so let's... So Ann Streeter, you are on our you're on our Zoom screen. But you're showing up as...
Give her the address, it's agriculture law.
Yeah, you're still showing up as muted.
Agritourism provides farmers...
There you go.
You hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yes.
Okay, agritourism provides farmers with an additional income source that allows them to keep their farming and increase the quality of life for their family. This whole agriculture business was designed to help the American farmer. Agritourism was not meant for loopholes for commercial businesses to come into agriculture and residential zoning communities where people live. The sad thing is, these people coming in with all their false claims are going to ruin it for people that it was meant for. And they will be the ones that will really suffer. You will see farming is not an easy business. You'll see probably more farms being lost because of people taking advantage of the programs that were not meant for them. I'm totally amazed at CIO Township's lack of concern for the local residents that live by these fake agritourism operations in CIO Township. When I talked to Township Supervisor, and to tell him that he, I told my Township Supervisor Officer that he was okay with a live band playing across the street from my house on a Sunday night till 11:00 p.m. And that speaks volumes about the integrity of CIO Township. And that Doug Lewin from that Carlisle Wharton, that guy, I don't care what you show him, he will deny it. He will act like he never heard from you. That guy is the biggest, fullest shit guy I've ever met in my life. And I'm going to need him one day because he has never talked to me, not one time. He avoids me, and I live right across the street from the Friddick Farms. And how in the hell, he is out there with his lazy ass on his couch and come to my house and listen to all the shit and all the noise going on across the street, not one time, in 13 years, where they keep on giving him stuff. They tell him, they tell him, we didn't want to guest-hoss. Well, they're building a place across the street from my house, and they swore it down. They promised me it's supposed to be just for hay. There's never been one bale of hay in this place. And they actually, they build a nice little barn in the middle, and they destroyed it. They're making it into some kind of retreat for people to come and hang out at. There's nothing to do with living in the house. How in the hell do you have a bathroom? It's got a his-and-hers bathrooms outside in CIO Township. They let it go. Who the hell has a bathroom? Who goes out, because there could be more problems? What about the people that end up living in that house later on because they got some kind of false thing going on, like they always do? And some little kid goes to go outside and take a piss, and they fall on the snow and bust their head open or something like that? You guys, you guys got a corrupt operation down there. And all I'm telling is, I don't know what the Herons, but you better be aware of what you sign with CIO Township, because they don't do what they say. And I'm telling you firsthand, they will not do what they say. So good luck with it, but be aware of what you sign for. Thank you very much.
Tell us what you really think. Okay. I see no other hands up at this point. There are no other hands up.
Okay. All right, so... I have a motion to close, by Commissioner Hyde, to close the public hearing. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and the public hearing is closed at 9:30. Right? And what I'd like to do, you know, we had quite a bit of stand-in-force during访 neighbors and other issues. So are there some questions that commissioners have of... So are there some questions that commissioners have of the environment?
I have a question for Ms. Haron. Would you consider restricting your barn use to wine tasting only?
So we, in our research and our conversation with Sciopet Township, we can, without any restrictions, become a farm stand, make the barn as big as we want, and just do wine tasting, and purely only that. What we were trying to do, and we had a discussion with Doug and the township, was to come to a compromise that actually puts more restrictions on us, but gives us the flexibility to have wine-related events that we feel like would be necessary to promote the business. So that's the trade-off that we're facing, is if it's only wine tasting and nothing else, then through the camps and the farm stand, there's, we could have noise as loud as the ordinance allows. But we feel like it's a better fit for the community and all of us to come together into a permit with the restrictions that Township is good with, that the neighbors can live with, and to not go that route. Because that was one path, but we felt like that really was kind of a defiant path and not ideal for trying to sell our neighbor's wine.
So the other question I have is, would you be willing to not have any music?
Here's, here's our struggle with that. Because amplified music, by definition, is playing Spotify on a Bluetooth speaker inside of the building. And that's where our struggle is, because if you go into a wine tasting or you likely hear some background music. We felt like our compromise of inaudible would possibly address that, but we would obviously be open to your feedback, you know, ultimately your decision on this.
I'd like to follow up on the question about the farm stand versus wine tasting. That surprises me to hear that said that way.
I don't hear you.
I'm a little surprised by the explanation that we just heard from the applicant, and wanted clarification as to whether a farm stand could be conducted in the barn without restrictions, as he stated. And he's, and they are going for a more, more open events, but adding restrictions on themselves in order to have a little bit more going on. But, so my question is, is a farm stand, does the barn count as a farm stand? And they could just have people stop in, and they could sell product out of that as the farm stand, as he stated?
Yeah, there, so there was a cut, you know, not in this proposal necessarily, but between the last time this was in front of the planning commission and now, there was a, the applicant's, I believe their attorney, made a statement that they could simply have a farm stand on the property under the Right to Farm Act, under the generally accepted agricultural management practices. There, people who are doing farming activities can have farm stands, and there's very little to no regulation on the part of the township for that. That's not what the applicant's asking for right now. So I don't want to get that confused with what could happen, maybe. And we're not so sure we agree with that. When that came up, it was turned over to our township attorney. I don't, don't recall getting an answer on that question. However, that's not what's before us tonight. What's before us tonight is a wine tasting room, which is a conditional use as an agricultural, commercial facility. So these are two totally separate questions.
So the answer aside, that's not under discussion?
No.
So we don't even need to take that...
It's not something... Because if the applicant's correct, they could just do it. So that's not, it's nothing that the planning commissioner and the township board would act on.
I was just surprised to hear those words.
Can I inject something? But I think what's before us is wine tasting plus other events.
It is.
Not just wine tasting.
Yeah, yeah, wine tasting facility, yes.
And other events. Wine tasting and other events facility. Except for weddings, I believe, and showers, that kind of thing. But other events besides wine tasting. So I just asked the applicant if they would be willing to just do wine tasting.
And that was...
And I think he expressed a business perspective that that would not be...
I think it would be difficult for us to be viable. The restriction of fifty percent of revenue generated from the tasting room must be from the crops, result in other whatever in this process. But I mean, certainly if you approved it conditional on things, you know, we would certainly go back and reassess the viability of that. So I'm not saying no, we wouldn't accept it. It's just a new sort of thought for us.
I have a couple of questions about why a hundred and fifty? And I think you answered the question about the amplified music. Why, you know, and there might be, if it's background music as opposed to like live music or whatever. So I'm interested in why the one fifty? And then also, I believe it was Mr. Harshy talked about, what about a, an annual sort of review? And I was interested in your response to both the number and that suggestion.
The one fifty came from the site of the building. Midwestern Consulting helped us drop the site plan. And they said, "Based on this size and this type of use, that is your maximum occupancy." We could manage less if that was a restriction. As far as annual review, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a good idea.
I never assumed we're going to have a hundred and fifty people at one time.
Yeah, no, that would be, I don't think we could really manage that from a parking perspective. But, you know, an annual review, and we talked about that with a neighbor, is whether it's a renewal or an annual opportunity to deny. We would just like to know going into this, what the, what the terms will be. So if our expectation is that we can't have more than two complaints for measurable criteria like audible sound to me, and I talked with the neighbor and said, "If you have police report where the police say we had audible sound, and it's twice, either take away our ability to do amplified music or take away the permit." You know, we'd like it to not be once, because we will have employees, and we can't make mistakes as a business. But we would quickly correct. So we felt like maybe two strikes and you're out. But an annual review would be totally fine. Maybe it would help ease some of the concerns here that it's not going to be something that is a part of the law.
Yeah, I actually answered quite a few of them, but I've got several questions. So first of all, I commend you for getting with the neighbors from our previous meeting. So, you know, that was great that you've reached out to them, and it sounds like you've actually addressed some of their concerns. What I got out of, I think, from all of the public comment is really three issues. One, the enforcement from Sciopet Township. Two, the noise. And three, the crops must be established. So I guess I'll start with the crops being established. Is that a legal issue that we have, since they haven't planted them yet? And if I read the report correctly, it's three years before they mature and they're actually going to open this. So it isn't until 2020, 25 that you would even entertain having a wine tasting or that type of business, correct?
Yeah, we figure it's a three-year process. In fact, we've been in this for two years with Sciopet Township. So the reason for trying to establish this contingent upon the crops harvesting is so in 2024, when we start the application process by 25, we would have the barn moved, we would have the interior finished out, and we would be in a position. Because also, political climate can change. We can plant the grapes, and then we can have... I mean, to be honest, when we started this, it was a different planning commission and a different trustee board, and we had completely different guidance than we did. And we're okay to adapt, but when we have the investment growing, our ability to adapt will be more difficult. So that's really, and we don't want to lead our neighbors and the community down a path where we reach an endpoint that's bad for either one of us. You know, that what I hear about the, the party barns, it feels like one side or the other or both aren't just getting together and figuring out how to solve a problem before it's becoming a big one.
And can I just say that, you know, we're under guidance from the T.T.V., the state of Michigan too? So, I mean, licensers for small wine-making business, like that takes at minimum eighteen months, at minimum. I mean, like, so I will be, you know, doing this process for a long time. And it's, you know, there's licenses for everything out there if you want to go on. I mean, like, this is not going to be an easy process. I am not just throwing my... I mean, like, so yes, we do need to know how viable that part is, because it's a lot of work. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not taking, this is not a light thing for me. You know, I am full throttle into school. I plan on continuing. I mean, I just want you to know that. I have, we bought thousands of dollars worth of vines that will be planted. So, I mean, regardless of how this goes down, I will have a vineyard, so.
So that may be a question more from, for the township is, can we approve this knowing they haven't planted the grapes yet? If we can, you know, that could be one of the contingencies that is subject to if they aren't planting.
I think it could be one of the contingencies.
Okay, so that, that may answer one of the questions then, but the crops established, that obviously you're not opening up for three years and that you will plant, you know, the grapes. As far as the, the noise, I know Commissioner Moore brought it up, but would you be willing to say no live music on site? No bands? Nothing alone?
I think if that's a requirement that you were opposed on us, we would find a way to manage that. I honestly think that this can be done in a way that's complete non-issue. And talking with the neighbors, you know, part of this is their concern for what could be and possibly giving an, you know, a permit that could later be adjusted to add things, maybe a compromise, right? So maybe if you have amplified music but not live music, that's a compromise. We did hire a sound engineering firm. We did a lot of tests. To me, and Lori and I have talked about this a lot, you know, over a glass of wine, it has to be inaudible. That's just the bottom line. Anything other than inaudible, and we have a business that is going to end up like Misty Farms, or even though we're selling wine and we have a tasting room, you know, if our neighbors in Bridgewood Hills, if our neighbors on Morrison hear us, they're not going to want us. So we're open to it.
Okay. And I think you also had that your, your business hours, that you said that the music would be off at ten o'clock? Is that, did I see that in the conditions?
We're very flexible. When we put in the permit, it was, because whatever you put in there is what you absolutely must adhere to. Now, we had a neighbor ask us would be willing to do nine P.M. Monday through Thursday, ten P.M. Friday, Saturday, and eight P.M. on Sunday. And we said, "Yeah."
Yeah, it's a tasting room.
It's a tasting room, so we can manage that, yeah.
So we could restrict, you were open to restricting hours of the operation also?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think finally, the third issue was the enforcement. Obviously, it's Sciopet Township, and I don't know often the police show up. But I think as a condition, you live on site. You said you would be at every, you'd be present for every event. I'd also have a condition that if you ever were to sell this business, the future proprietor, they would also have to live on, on site. It isn't something that they could, you know, operate from outside of living at this property. So again, if we're allowed to put that in there,
Yeah.
the proprietor would have to live in the future. The other thing, I believe you're open from, what, like, March to November? Is that the, the operation of the winery?
March might be a little bit early.
Okay, so approximately seven or eight months you would be open?
Yeah.
And you've stated that you'd have fifty percent of the revenue then would be generated? How much, how much wine are you producing that if you're open seven days a week for eight straight months, every, you know, do you, could you actually be able to actually meet that intent of fifty percent? Like, if you had an event every day, there's enough grapes and whatnot that you could, you could actually meet that requirement?
Yeah, I could potentially produce seven figures of wine from the land that we have pretty easily. Now, we will be working after hours in the basement of the wine tasting room, producing the wine. So like, our employees may not start at nine A.M., they may start at seven A.M., they may go until eleven P.M. But that could be just the farming aspect of this. You know, it's not the public hours of the tasting room.
That's, that was really, those were my concerns. And maybe we restrict, I heard people mentioning petting farms, corn bays, lighting, hayride, stuff like that will not be accessory to this, to this use. Correct? Okay.
Yeah, and I think lighting is important to minimize as well.
Those were my concerns.
You guys have been very thorough. There's not too many that you didn't cover that I wanted covered. I'm not sure that I have it all down exactly how we would propose to restrict it if we were to go that route tonight. But one of my main concerns that you touched on, was the hundred and fifty people limit. And you said you were not anticipating that to ever be reached. What is a lower number that you might propose, rather than us propose it on you? I've been to wine tasting rooms, and there's people coming and going all the time up in, up in Leland, Iowa. They have multiple rooms in buildings. There might be twenty people in a room. There might be three rooms. And I've never seen it full. So, you know, it's just, it's people coming and going, and fifty people might be a lot.
So we're, yeah. There's a harvest, and maybe like the Fourth of July might be where we near capacity. But, you know, one idea might be a restriction to say we are below a hundred people except for five times a year. Or I'm just throwing things out there that we could possibly live with.
If I could interrupt you, you brought something up, and I think we have event permits. For two times, no?
Wait, it hasn't passed the trustees yet, the event board.
Yeah, we, we, yes. We, I meant the township.
Right.
And, okay, we don't.
They haven't passed it yet.
Oh, I see. Stay tuned.
Yes.
So fifty people might be not getting people thinking of fun party events going on.
Yeah, we could live it, I mean.
I mean, if we were limited to fifty, we may come back in a few years and ask you, based on good behavior, to increase that amount. But again, we're willing to start off, you know...
I mean, sorry, an annual review, then those are the kind of things you could bring up. As well as others bringing up, but they might have concerns about.
You, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we can do an annual review. I don't think that's something you can do in a conditional land use. It's either approved based on the land and the conditions, and those conditions are, will be there regardless of a year from now, where they're not. And, I mean, I can, I can check with the township attorney, but we, that's something we've never done inside of Township. And it's something that I don't believe we can do. I could be wrong. But placing, and the issue with that is you could get, one, you know, the applicant, if approved, would have invested a lot of money into something based on land use standards, neighbors, all these other things. Two years later, you get a new township board, new planning commission, that thing's completely different. And now their investment in the property could be jeopardized by political considerations.
I don't think the intent of the review, though, is to review the conditions. It's whether those conditions had been met.
Right.
And maybe there's a way. I mean, you can always come back with, and to amend your conditional use through the process. But this would be, maybe, maybe we need to identify some things that, that we want to work on. And then, you know, because I think we're really close. I mean, the reaching out to the neighbors, I've been helped immensely. I think we do need to confirm that we can make it conditional on the crop. And whether or not that crop needs to be planted or not at the time of the, is a conditional use. And I think we do need to look at the how we could do some sort of review of the, the use. And whether it's the, the zoning compliance officer, the trustees, the planning commission, some entity that would be responsible for convening.
Well, you know, that person, that it would be appropriate...
Well, you know, that person, that would be a proper person, would be the zoning administrator, and that happens for all special land uses. I mean, that could happen at any time for any special land use, to make sure the conditions are.
Well, then maybe we can start Norman's that does that. That could be another issue. I'm just trying to get us to a point where, because I think we're, I think we're relatively close, you know, and I appreciate the feedback, especially of adjacent neighbors, and, you know, so there's the number of folks. I think the idea, the email that was sent about, you know, making the noise inaudible, the hours, so in my mind, it is the enforcement, and I think we need to also, you know, I hate to bring this out, but kind of look at the enforcement, somebody went back and looked at the records of Misty Farm, but has our enforcement been more effective, although with COVID, there've been less events probably, but how effective has that enforcement done? Is that working? And then, is there a process that we could do, an annual review somewhere, somehow, that, you know, the public could, you know, especially the neighbors could be involved in? And then, looking at, you know, just the, and then have the parents look carefully at capacity. And I don't know, I think at one time, there's a floor plan, and there is a code requirement, like it's seven people per square foot for an assembly use for standing. If you're planning on having seating and tables, it's 15 per square foot. So, we might want to take a look at the actual capacity of where you're going to have the public, and maybe it's a public capacity and not a, you have to deal with how many people you're going to employ and so forth. But, you know, it might be a good thing to do that. So, I don't know, that's kind of where I'm at.
Just say one thing, when you give, grant the conditional use, you can't take it back.
Right.
So, let's be honest about, let's say that. It's not like we can get around taking it back. It runs with the land.
Yeah.
So, let's say, for instance.
You can revoke it for not needing conditions.
Yes.
So, why hasn't that happened on these other sites?
Good question.
If that's so easy to do. I've heard nothing positive about people's experience in Syle Township.
Except I think there are a couple of issues. One, the conditions for Misty Farms were very different from what we're discussing. I mean, incredibly different, if you look at that condition. And that's one of the issues.
Well, I would move to table this topic today, because I'm not making a motion right now, but that's where I'm, I'm leaning. I think there's some, I think we need to dig deep about the conditions seem to be very pivotal in this project. And I too want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Heron for going back and talking to neighbors. Heard several neighbors tonight speak about, they're reaching out, and it sounds like there's some movement. But I don't think that we know enough to make a motion to approve or deny it tonight. That's why I'm suggesting tabling, because I, for one, would like to know from the township, what have been the complaints on our township wineries, and what have we done about it? Because I don't think that, I think one of the, I've heard a lot tonight, but I think one of the things I heard tonight was about enforcement, and that we're not good at enforcement. Now, I'm going to take those comments as they came. I don't really know that. I don't have personal information about that, but it doesn't sound like from other folks who've spoken tonight that we have been effective in enforcement.
And I think that is true. We started a new enforcement protocol, but it was also kind of during COVID, so I don't know what kind of events. So, it would be good to get a report on that, I think, on our enforcement, look into this review process. And then, I think we need to, you know, start with the email that came out of the latest discussion, and kind of look at, you know, the lighting piece, the annual review, and the capacity possibly.
And I wasn't finished, but I just would say, I don't think we should be approving anything until we have a firm grip on that.
These are the issues.
Right, okay, well, that's good, because there are people that are, have their residences in the back of this barn, and that, that's kind of, you know, so anyway, I fully admit I don't know.
I would add to that, the disconfirmation about the contingency on the crop, and that's the point of that.
But it's your view that the contingent's conditional use can be revoked? Is that what you said, Doug?
It absolutely can, yes.
And I, I just ask you this, is there a, is there a, should I be worried about the specificity of the reasons for revocation and/or its enforcement? In other words, does the zoning ordinance lay that out with specificity?
Does it lay, does it lay out how it gets revoked? The enabling legislation?
And what's the criteria for revocation?
Not meeting, not meeting conditions of approval, or be the, if an applicant is not meeting the conditions of their conditional use approval, there's an enablement legislation that allows zoning is where we fall to, and that allows, would require an applicant to be brought in front of the township board with a public hearing, so that they could voice their side of the story, and then the complainants could voice their side of the story, and that would be a hearing held in front of the township board to revoke the special land use.
And it's your, it's your belief that that has never happened because the conditions have not been very particular or lengthy in these other wineries?
Yeah, the, I can't tell you why it hasn't, there are, there have been complaints. My office has only been involved in coenforcement for Misty Valley, Misty Farm this last season. So, when I hear some of the residents talk about 13 years, that's, I can't speak to that. I will tell you, last season, we issued Misty Valley four citations. I don't know that anyone even knows that, but there were four civil infraction citations issued to Misty Valley, Misty Farm. And what happens after a citation is issued is an applicant can, they can admit responsibility and pay a minor fee, or they can not admit responsibility and indicate they don't believe they violated any ordinance. And that is essentially what has happened, and we have been discussing, in discussions with the Misty Valley attorney, that they have their attorney and them, about the citations. We issued them last year. So, coenforcement is not an easy business, in particular, when an applicant is not agreeing with your coenforcement. They have the right to object, and they're objecting. And so, we are, we've had a couple of meetings with their attorney, and we continue to have those discussions. And if anything comes out of this, we hope it comes, something positive comes out so that they operate in a manner next year that reduces any conflicts. But it's not as easy, you know, to revoke a special land use permit. You better have some pretty ironclad reasons. And at this point, that has not come up.
So, that goes also back to the, some things that are actually measurable.
Yes.
Such as audible.
So, I kind of wrote down five things to work on. Tasting, tasting room capacity, annual review process, township enforcement record and process, confirmation that contingent on the crop meets the ordinance, and more general, some measurable standards.
What was the last?
Measurable standards.
Oh. For revocation?
Yeah, well, it within, or the terms, you know, so that the conditions are measurable. So, you know, is the definition of an audible, an audible, okay? You know, just will we get into issues with those, with those conditions? You know, how can, how can it be measurable, how can it be measurable? Yeah. So, any other thoughts from folks?
I would just say one more question for Mr. Lawan. In terms of revocation hearing, or I'm not sure what you call it, whatever that public hearing is, who, what triggers that? Does that have to be a complaint from the, from the neighbors, or can that be generated by the township itself?
I don't think we've ever had one. I think that one of the, one of the, one of the public is correct. I don't think we've ever revoked a special land use permit from the township, but I would, I will read that part of the enablement legislation and have an answer for it.
Okay, so then, the township enforcement, their records, the process, including revocation? Okay, if that's the right word.
Can we, man, to table, move to table until we get that information, collective review?
So, I'll make a formal motion.
What's that?
I'll make a formal motion, if that's what's in order. I move that we table the Huron Farms conditional use application in order to gain more information about conditions that we're considering, as well as revocation methods and violations and all of that to consider further before the planning commission.
Could I make it?
Even more formal?
Specific, that includes the tasting room capacity, annual review process, the township enforcement process, including revocation?
Including but not limited to those things.
And then contingent, and making sure that the contingency of the crop, on the crop meets the ordinance itself, because that has come up a couple of times, and that we investigate measurable standards.
Sure, long as it's including but not limited to.
Yep, yes, including but not limited to the following.
Support.
Okay, and I have a motion from Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde, to table the Huron Farms conditional use.
One question.
Yes.
Did you guys, there's one hand up. I don't know if you want to, I don't know, did you close the public hearing? I'm not sure.
We did, we did.
Was it somebody who was trying to speak?
No, in fact, their hand just went away.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there, okay, is there further discussion? Right now, how far will call vote?
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culverton?
Yes. Thank you, and a lot of good discussion tonight, and I think moving in the, hopefully in the right direction. Then we'll move on. We have the unfinished business of Heritage Woods, I'm here for this, and that is OAPUD number 20001, PSP number 2004, resiling to PUD. And this was tabled at our last meeting, and the applicant has indicated that they have, they have addressed the concerns, and so I think we need to ask the applicant to come along and address the concerns that we, the reasons.
I don't hear you.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Okay, we're asking the applicant to address the concerns that were, that we raised at the last meeting where it was tabled, and including the, the public concerns. And so, we're going to have the applicant address us, and I believe the applicant's online.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, you, you have the floor to provide, to do your presentation.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Excellent. Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Daniel Johnson, the applicant. We have four engineers on the call this evening, Joe Mater, Washington Engineering, Julie Crowe, who's our traffic engineer, and Fleyce and Vandenbrink, Ted Erickson, working on our permitting with Ego from IMEG, and Mark Swetman, our principal geologists from Wood. They're available to answer any technical questions you may have during this meeting. So, our presentation this evening is focused on the follow-up items that were discussed at the last meeting. So, at this point, I'd like to move to a screen sharing. You can allow me to do it. Okay?
You should be able to screen.
And everyone see that okay? So, once again, the project adhered, adhered to Woods Village, focused on a senior, a senior housing need in the community at large, for the aging population. And the follow-up review items that we discussed, or came up at the last meeting, were as follows from our notes. One, there was a discussion about the MDOT entrance and service drive. Two, hydrogeological technical questions. Three, open space clarifications. Four, PD buffer clarifications. And five, path to public movements clarifications. And we had the neighborhood considerations, again, repeating the MDOT entrance and drive, and the agricultural area awareness, and then finally, the consultant review letters. We're going to try and take them one at a time as we go through the discussion, and I'll bring our consultants into the conversation where appropriate. So, just in terms of general reference, this is the concept plan that was presented at the last meeting, again, for, again, for reference. First topic we're going to discuss is down here at the intersection of Baker, the entrance to the proposed project. This is an excerpt from some of the MDOT application material that clearly describes existing condition geometry of the intersection and the proposed geometry. There was some confusion on the part of the service drive neighbors relative to the requirements, or not the requirements, the proposal for signalization. And in fact, if you look at the proposed geometry, the west side of this intersection will receive a new signalization for allowing, allowing anyone that uses this drive to exit in a safe manner. Again, that was part and parcel of the traffic studies that were prepared for MDOT and the road commission, and would be incorporated into the final project. Julie, if you can allow Julie Crowe to enter the, enter the conversation. Mr. Lawan, I would appreciate it. Julie presented to the prior planning commission, at our last meeting, with the prior planning commission, did a thorough review of the entire traffic impact statement and study. We don't want to get into all of that, but just wanted her to touch on the discussion with MDOT relative to the specific interchange that we're talking about here.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Do you by any chance have a larger, I mean, this is nice because it shows the exact intersection, but do you also have something that shows? but do you also have something that shows, like the service drive and?
Yes, yes.
Exactly how they?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Correct, yeah, that's the next slide, the next following slides. So bear with me a second. So is Julie Crowe allowed to be on the call?
Yeah, I'm having a difficult time bringing her in, promoting her as an analyst.
Okay.
But I will, let's try the, just allow your talk. So Julie should, Julie is, she can now address the issue.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
She has to unmute herself.
Julie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
We could hear you.
Sorry about that.
Good.
So the, what we're showing here, this is the existing and the proposed geometries at this intersection. We had discussions with MDOT regarding what would be the recommended geometries, and how they wanted to see the intersection laid out. So the exhibit on the left shows what's currently, the intersection operations, with the driveway shown on the west side. And then with the new configuration, with the fully signalized intersection, with existing interchange and the revised lane geometry.
Great, thanks, thanks Julie.
Yeah.
So moving on then to, to get to the next slides. Here's a photo of the existing entrance, just for context purposes. And this is a photo looking down the existing service drive. There are a couple of, of neighbors, Mr. Kett and the Spicer family that live down that direction. And the other issue that was raised at the meeting had to do with drainage in the area. So we had Washington Engineering and their surveying crew go out and take some shots, various locations, look at the drainage conditions, to try and understand what was going on with the drainage. And there's a, a large drain situation on the north side of the existing drive that then feeds across underneath Baker Road going to the east. So I'm going to let, if you can bring Joe into the conversation, Joe Mader briefly. We were, we did reach out to Mr. Kett, discussed, in addition to the drainage issues, some of the configuration requirements and discussions with MDOT. So if you could bring Joe in briefly to the conversation, we can talk specifically about the findings on the drainage.
Sure, I think I'm in there now. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Yep, so our survey crew went out and located all the drainage structures within the intersection, down the service drive, back within the property. There's two, two culverts that's also cross behind the homes, that takes drainage behind, behind all the homes. That was one of the concerns. Ensuring that we pick up that drainage there. Make sure we route it around and we don't block the drainage off. Also, when our survey crew did the evaluation of the intersection there, they found several structures were actually plugged, leading to additional water running into the properties and not flowing through, and entering into these two quite large elliptical culverts that cross underneath Baker Road. So as part of the project, we will need to pick those up and get them routed out correctly to eliminate that flooding problem that neighbors are currently having.
Thank you, Joe. So going back to the plan, this was the MDOT approved entrance plan that was in your prep package previously, just for point of context. You see Baker Road in the center, this new service drive, this, the new entrance this direction, and the existing service drive going down to the south. North is up in this diagram. So in our discussions with, with Mr. Kett, we discussed, you know, what are the possibilities to potentially addressing their concern with the oversized vehicles? And Joe was able to run some geometrics on a large-sized vehicle that would be at least a fire truck size, in terms of, for the purposes of that initial evaluation. And then in discussions with, with Julie, we were proposing a, what's referred to as a loon element, which is, gets its name from the head of a loon, or something that looks like a duck. You see the diagram down here. So the introduction of a little loon, loon device there that would accommodate the oversized vehicles that would come into the, potentially come into that service drive entrance. Again, the, the underlying, the underlying geometry, the underlying intersection here was all driven by MDOT. And it's all, all of this is on MDOT property, MDOT right-of-way on this side. And the neighbors, the service drive neighbors, driveways connect to this MDOT service drive. So this is the property line for the right-of-way. So, moving on to the next slide. Back up a second. So this is one approach to how we might accommodate the oversized vehicles for the, for the service drive neighbors. There are other options that we can approach, but we started with that as an option. Another possibility would be to move this location farther down, create a loon location there, or look at widening the median in this area, or utilizing some sort of truck apron in the median section. So there's other ways to approach this, but we started with, started with this one for the purposes of the conversation with Mr. Kett. And, and we understood that he was in close communication with the Spicer family as well. So if we were to go down this road, in terms of consideration for the service drive neighbors, the project would propose to, provide or propose to provide the following initiatives. We would construct the loon addition for the oversized vehicles. We would address the drainage issues, part of our file engineering, and we would grant access easement to the service drive neighbors in that, in that area. This, of course, would require MDOT acceptance. Julie believes that MDOT would not have a problem doing that. Then it would also require the acceptance of Mr. Kett, his immediate neighbor to the south. He would, he would have to in turn grant access to the Spicer family, which is south of him, to cross his property on that loon area, and then grant a temporary construction easement for the work associated with the loon. So in terms of the MDOT service drive issue and the oversized vehicles, this is what we came up with in terms of a, an approach. Now, above and beyond that, from a long-term future planning standpoint, it's likely that, that the, you know, their desire to sell their, their property and the use of it as residential is probably realistically a short-term situation. So long-term, and from a future planning standpoint, it's probably more likely that accessing that property would be from the boulevard rather than being so close to the existing entrance. Now that has implications to, you know, that's a private road. That has implications from a maintenance and licensing standpoint, but big picture from a long-term standpoint. That's how likely this would evolve, you know, going into the future. The next topic on our list was, there were some questions I believe Mr. Wood had and Mr. Cotter about the hydrogeological valuation. This, just by way of background, this document was prepared for the purchase of an Eagle, Semittal, Semittal to Eagle for the community wastewater utility system, which is a long process in and of itself. So we started this early last year, and did a Semittal to Eagle in late July, early August, for their process, which is now six months or so down the road and nearing, nearing completion. But with respect to the questions that came up, I'm going to, I guess, turn it over to, to Mark Swetman to answer any questions. If we can do that, at this point in time, it probably would make sense. That's, that's okay.
Could I interrupt?
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Would you entertain that we might address these one at a time, since we're going to jump, either we jump from one topic to the other to the other, and then try to back up and have you pull up the slides again, or we take them as you go?
I'd be happy to complete everything, or whichever your preference is. It's, it's up to you, it's up to, really up to permission.
Talk about that entrance.
Yeah, entrance? Yeah, okay, yeah.
I don't mean to be the first either, but.
No, no, because I had the same, go ahead. Yeah, if we could, I think it would be good to deal with them one at a time.
Okay.
So the entrance, I know, was a major kind of concern. Go ahead, Commissioner Hyde.
Okay, thank you. If you could go to your proposal. If I, I'd like to understand it as well as I can. So if I'm driving north on Baker, and I want to come into the service drive, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, because I was walking over so I could see, but then the microphone is behind me. If I'm coming north on Baker, and I want to turn into the service drive because I live in one of the three houses, I would have to turn left into the boulevard, and there's a divider?
There's a signal, yeah, there's a traffic signal here, or traffic light signal that would allow you to turn left, correct?
And I would turn into, and there's a divider in between the two sides of the boulevard?
Correct.
A cement divider of some sort?
Yes.
And then I would drive down and turn left, and there might be traffic exiting your facility. Depending on the time of day, it might be a, a bit of traffic waiting at the light for me to turn left. And then I have to wait for the light to change, to turn, for them to clear, and then I could finish my maneuver? Is that correct?
Oh, you would come in and make a, you would come in this way, make a left, and go this direction, and go south on the service drive? As far as?
My point was, conceivably, I had to wait at the light, and then when it was my turn, I would have to wait for the other people who are waiting at the light now, exiting your facility. And, and then once they cleared, then I could make my left turn, and then a right turn onto the service drive.
I guess I could, if, if Julie wanted to weigh in a second, perhaps shed some light on, on that, it would be good.
I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying that's the procedure.
We don't anticipate that the, the queues will extend back, such that they would extend past this, this loon. So vehicles, whereas without this access, that there is the potential for those vehicles to block the existing service access drive. But with, with the design as shown, we don't anticipate that that will be blocked.
Well, you don't think they'll go back then?
Yeah.
No.
How many, what's the stacking distance? How many vehicles?
That's proposed?
Yes.
I would defer to Joe to see if he could pull that up real quick.
Yeah, there's about three cars stacking in each lane. Then ultimately, I think we'd have to go back to our traffic engineer and see if there's anticipated stacking beyond that. That access easement is, is very typical of the same type of access we have along Jackson Road, where we've got a Michigan left, where you're making a left turn at a light, and you may have to sit and wait for the light to turn in order to get through. But there's, there's about three cars stacking there, and we can show that when we get into final engineering and confirm it with the traffic study to ensure that it's adequate.
I have a question too. How are you going to put that loon there when it's not your property?
I can answer that question. So as we discussed in the, in the summary slide that you're looking at, at the bottom section, it would require the acceptance of Mr. Kett in order to do this. That would involve granting an easement on that corner of his property for the loon. And it would involve granting a temporary construction easement for work associated with the loon. Now, if Mr. Kett wasn't agreeable to doing that, then we would go to one of these other options that are described here. If this loon, this location was out of the, was not acceptable.
Okay, and my other question is, is, I'm thinking about buying a 40-foot tagline. How am I going to come out of the service drive and be able to head, to head south on Baker Road? I come down the service drive, how am I going to turn right and make a U-baggy to get on Baker Road?
How would you do it now?
I go up, I go up further, up to the very top of the hill up there, the very top, at the other lane over there, then I make my turn. Because I can't make it wider, I'll hit the curbs.
Well, the other approach is to use a truck, or referred to as truck aprons on those islands in certain locations. We can certainly review that with our traffic engineer.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if I come out, if I come down where that bottom red line is, and I'm heading north, and I want to go, and I want to make a U-baggy and go south on Baker Road, I can't, I can't make that turn because I'm in, I'm in the left turn lane, not the right turn lane. So I'd be illegal making that, I'm supposed to go left at that little arrow left. If I try to go, make that right right there, it's too narrow for me to make it, and I'm going to be hitting the curb, and I'll be way out in the other lane, the turning lane out in Baker Road. So that's not going to get it, as far as I see it.
Yeah, okay, we have to be real, relatively structured in, in the dialogue at this point. But I think, I, I think he hears, and the planning commission hears, your issue. It's not just getting in, but it's getting out. Because right now, we have a wide, we have a.
I have a problem with the other one too, because I don't believe that's going to get it either, the 40-foot tagline, that you can't make a wide enough turn. You can't, it's not like a fifth wheel where you can turn a 90.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other planning commission members have questions? Yes?
One follow-up, oh, could you put that slide back up? Yeah, it could be that one, and I don't mind if it's the other proposal. But the reason that you have the boulevard to the very south of the property easement that you have, to bring your boulevard through, I think it's to line up with the entrance and exit from the freeway on the other side. And my question is, if you have lights to control this, do they have to be opposite each other so that you perhaps could move your boulevard further north on the property and ease the turning situation, and still control it with the same lights that you were thinking of doing? But they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be opposite each other, but they'd still be synchronized the way you intend? Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just asking why you could.
Sounds like a good question for Julie.
So we've been looking at this for a long time. We, we originally had the driveway located farther north. The county did not agree with that access. We had to relocate the driveway to where it's shown now. MDOT continued to push us to move that driveway as far south as possible as we could, so that, to limit the potential for wrong-way drivers. So that was MDOT's concern with moving this driveway any farther north, is that the egress vehicles would be more aligned with the vehicles exiting the ramp. So you can see, there's like a little wedge there even, where we had to put some tracks through the middle of the intersection with the pavement markings to help with the prevention of wrong-way drivers. So the design, as you see here, and the, the location, this was all through the discussions that we had with MDOT and the county. So unfortunately, no, there isn't an opportunity to move it farther north than what is shown here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So how, so how do I get out of the service drive and head north then? How would I do that on Baker Road?
Did you hear the question? How do you go from the, the service drive?
With my 40-foot tagline, how am I going to get out of that service drive and head north?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing the question.
Okay, how am I going to come out of my service drive with a 40? Okay, how am I going to come out of my service drive with a 40-foot tagline and head north on Baker Road?
You would exit the site as you currently exit the site, so you'll, you'll end up crossing the double lanes. It's not going to be an everyday occurrence, so, and I highly doubt anyone would ticket you for doing that.
You paid a ticket?
It's a private drive.
No, it's not.
No, 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 your approach...
My approach is not a private drive. That approach is owned by the, it's easement of the, by the town, from the MDOT.
Right, there is no traffic control order on your easement, nor is there going to be a traffic control order on the proposed site drive. That would be how you would be ticketed.
Okay, so, so then I'm just going to block traffic then, getting out of there, waiting to go that way?
Okay, thanks, I think we've got...
Okay, I'm just trying to ask questions.
No, I think that's fine, but it's our...
I live down there, you don't. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to...
Right, so am I.
That's a lot. And any other questions from planning commissioners about the intersection? Go ahead, Mr. Hyde.
Half the world, I want a traffic circle. No, I've, I'm not even remotely joking. The ones along 23 North at, and I want to say it's Lee Road, but I'm not sure. Where they have actually three of them, and they include entrances and exits of the freeway to keep flowing.
Like the Brighton Road area? So, so the question was, did anyone look at a traffic circle and does that help with any of the issues?
Uh, no, MDOT did not identify this as a location where a roundabout would be considered.
So nobody remarked on it when you just said...
The intersection operations did not warrant any mitigation measures. So that was not something that was considered at this location.
And the service drive was taken into account, I'm sure. You didn't want to bring up a traffic circle possibility?
In, in anyone's professional opinion, would a traffic circle or a roundabout improve that intersection?
So somebody didn't have to pull an illegal turn?
Well, I just, one of the, one of the considerations is you've got, that's really where the ramp up to the bridge starts. So there may be some, you know, technical issues with accomplishing that in that location.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you go back to that slide you just had, the green right there? These arrows that you have here, I don't know if you can see what I'm pointing to?
Yes.
What do they reflect?
That's the lanes that they're controlling. They aren't going straight ahead or right.
Oh, this is, this is reflected with the entrance?
Exactly, yes, yes.
All right, let's go, let's go ahead and move on to the hydrological issues.
So as I, as I recall, there were a couple of questions on the hydrogeological topic at the last meeting. I believe Mr. Wood, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyde had some specific questions. So we invited Mark Swetman to join the call this evening to address those questions. If you could allow Mark to enter the call, please.
I think I'm unmuted already, Dan.
Oh, you're okay, okay.
I don't really have a, yeah, I don't have a presentation, I'm just here ready for questions if you've got them.
Correct.
So did you want to reiterate your...
Well, I had a question about the nitrates, is that what we're talking about? Is that what you were prepared to talk about? And, and with the water flowing into the basins and then soaking down through the earth that had been prior, had seen prior applications of probably some quantities of manure in order to get the elevated levels in the, in the water that you had tested of nitrates, would, would this discharge of water now be flushing this out of the soil and into the groundwater aquifer? And where's it going? I mean, this is quite a bit of water for these number of units that are going to be, I, I forget the tens of thousands of gallons per day, but is there going to be a leaching of the nitrogen compounds in the soil into the groundwater at a faster rate because of all the water that you're now putting into it?
Sure, let me, let me see if I can answer some of those questions. So first of all, on the, the nitrates that are there. So there were some of the wells, the monitoring wells that we put in and sampled that had nitrate levels that exceed some of, some of the state standards for groundwater discharge. And so in conversations with the state and in looking at, you know, not adding anything to that nitrogen load, the, basically the standard for, let's just call it nitrates in totality, so it's called total inorganic nitrogen. So the standard is 10 parts per million. And at the plant, if you look at the, you know, what's been written in the draft that we're talking with Eagle about, the discharge standard from the treated effluent will be no greater than five parts per million of total inorganic nitrogen. So we're not adding, you know, anything that's going to be, you know, it's basically, it's 50% of the standard that the state has. But I guess that's, that's the first part. The other part to put into perspective, the amount of water that's being discharged. At its peak, so a bill out of the entire facility, you know, the permit's going to be roughly 64,000 gallons of treated wastewater every day. And that's at its peak. And so you, you look at that number, and I tried to think of some way to put that into perspective for everybody. In a typical household well, when a driller comes out and puts a well in at your house, they'll, generally that well will yield someone, somewhere on the order of 15 to maybe 50 gallons a minute at peak flow, if they put in the right pump. And generally, for just this conversation, I said, well, if you, if you have a house well, and that house well produces 20 gallons a minute, which is pretty common for the aquifers out in that area. And basically, the amount of water being discharged on a daily basis is basically two houses, their wells pumping all day long. So that just kind of puts it into perspective, just to get some understanding of the amount of water that's being discharged. So it's an interesting question about, you know, basically I'll put it down of, are we going to be flushing any additional nitrate out of the soil? So at the, the location where the beds are going to be built, the upper portions of the soil, while they're gravel, or while they're sandy or granular, they're not, it's better for us from a discharge standard for ability to get the water into the ground and allow it to get away. But those upper four or five feet of soil are going to be taken out. So now you're down into, you know, basically raw, not soil, as I think a lot of people think of it, but really just sand material underneath the soil. And the water, of course, will be discharged into that and then work its way out through the aquifer. And the aquifer here is not the onaquifer that you used as a drinking water supply. You know, if you were to put a well in, the drinking water supplies, you know, have to be a minimum of 100 feet deep or go through 10 feet of clay. The aquifer here isn't like that, this is the upper unconfined onaquifer. Basically, it goes down to maximum depth of about 40 feet with sand up above that. But I went through and looked at how much water from where the discharge beds will be and how much water is going into the aquifer, and then how much the aquifer, what's the mass of water that's in the aquifer? And, you know, we're talking, and I could give you calcs if you wanted, but roughly 270 million gallons of water are in the aquifer from where the discharge is down towards the creek where, Mill Creek, where discharge would occur. So that comparison volume, again, trying to put it into perspective for everybody. And you look, people always talk about an Olympic-sized swimming pool. And so that's about enough water to fill 410 Olympic-sized swimming pools, so pretty big volume. And when you look at the volume of water being discharged into that, you know, it's like a quarter of 1%, in fact, less than a quarter of 1% of water that's being discharged at the site and going into the aquifer. Again, I did that just as a way to kind of get some perspective for everybody. And along with all of that, there is monitoring that will be going on of not only the effluent discharge, but then long-term monitoring of the groundwater itself. And there are monitoring wells that are already in place at the site. And we have a monitoring plan that's been submitted to the state. And so far, in fact, we expect that they're going to accept the monitoring plan as we put it forward.
And that monitoring plan was what triggered my question, because I noticed that you were, because of the elevated levels of nitrogen or nitrates in the groundwater in the test wells, that you waited and used the monitor wells, you weren't going to use the nitrates as a criteria for how you were treating your water?
Well, actually, no, it is for how we're treating the water. So instead of discharging the water basically at the groundwater standard, the discharge is going to be half of the groundwater standard. So we're monitoring actually at a tighter or closer way than waiting for something to show up in the groundwater. They're actually monitoring for total inorganic nitrogen at the point of discharge. So right when the...
Right, at the point of discharge.
Yeah, right at, yeah, right when the discharge comes out of the pipe, before it hits the ground, it's going to meet the groundwater standard.
But not afterwards at the monitoring wells?
Well, afterwards at the monitoring wells, what we've got are, you know, that pre-existing nitrogen levels that are there. And so the, I guess the anticipation would be that those numbers wouldn't go up, but they should go down over time. And I, I would think that those numbers are pretty typical, the nitrate numbers are pretty typical for that aquifer in the agricultural area.
The agricultural area, yeah. I'm just worried about Mill Creek, so I think what you're saying is, it's such a big aquifer, don't worry about it.
I'm saying it's a big aquifer and we're discharging at concentrations that are less than it's already there.
But you are going to be monitoring it in the, in the monitor wells, you will be measuring nitrate levels, and even if that's not a criteria, you'll still be tracking it?
Correct. And there are, I think there's five monitoring wells that are there. Obviously, an upgrade it well and then the downgrade well.
I don't know what to say anymore than that.
One issue that has come up in relation to this is that Huron River Watership Council wanted an opportunity to look at the, any site plan that was proposing a community waste system. And they haven't had the opportunity to, to look at this. I think when I contacted them, they, they were in the process of looking at it. And so if, are there some contacts that they could have, if they have questions?
Sure, what will actually happen, you know, the draft permit will be coming out for public comment. And so that'd be a great opportunity for Huron River Watership Council to take a look at this. And the other, the other part of that is, remember, this discharge from where the beds are to your, to the, to Mill Creek is over 1,000 feet, it's like 1,700 feet away from Mill Creek. And I know there'll, there's usually concern in the Huron River basin for things that are less than 1,000 feet from the Huron River. Or not the Huron River, but from a stream that discharges into the Huron River, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and when, when is this going to be available?
Public hearing?
We believe it will be sometime in February.
And it'll be on Eagle's website, or how, how would we be notified?
We're, we're going to put a notice, we're going to put a notice at Township Hall, and it will be on the website as well.
And that website you're talking about is Eagle?
Correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, next one.
Thanks, Mark, so moving on, moving on. So there was some discussion about the open space clarifications at the last meeting. Again, just for reference, this is the diagram that was illustrated at our last meeting. And with respect to the open space itself, this is an excerpt of what's in your ordinance for open space, preservation definition, which references not less than 30% of total land area devoted open space with, with all the following features, et cetera. And as, as the project proposes, there are 61 acres of, of open space, which is 59% of the, of the total land area. So I'm not sure what other questions were, were all, revolved around open space. But this, this is kind of a summary of, I guess, how we look at it.
Okay, and, and so we're below this, okay, the, we're at, okay, below the 60% or 59? All right.
50%, what is the actual...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the PUD buffer clarifications, which I think was the next item. Again, similarly, an excerpt from your ordinance regarding that topic. And it references a setback in buffering of a minimum of 50 feet. Typically, we have a 100-foot that's proposed for the project, which is, I think, clearly depicted on the, in the plans that were submitted.
So the fact that the decks stuck into the 100-foot perimeter didn't matter because it really is 50 feet? That's required? Yeah, yeah, there's a 50-foot buffer. I think we're also taking exception to the decks being counted as open space. So they have to exclude those. So did they, you want to back up one and talk about the calculation?
So were the decks excluded from the open spaces that...
I would have to verify that with our land use planner. This doesn't get into that level of detail, but we can certainly verify that. And if it went down to, just hypothetically, if it went down to 58%, that would likely be the implication, which is still greater than the 30%, or we could make some adjustment in the, in the solar farm area to, to recover whatever that is. I think there's an easy solution that could be dealt with in a final PUD process to address them.
Oh, so you could redo the calculations for the final, is that what I just heard?
Yes.
If you can update those calculations for the final, or what is... If we can update those calculations for the final, or what is-
Is that 100-foot buffer then, that's, not taking into account the driveways then, that's to the actual building structure?
Correct, building structures, yep.
Okay.
In many cases, you can see in many cases around the planet, far exceeds 100 feet. 100 feet would be this location, this location, this location. So it's, in many cases, it far exceeds that as you go around the periphery of the project.
Yeah, which is, and this gets, I think, maybe the next one is the buffer, I mean, the potential conflicts that have been brought up with the dairy farm?
That's the next, next topic, next slide. If you're ready to move on, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, it's, first we talked, yeah, I'm sorry, first we talked about the pathways. Let me do the pathways first, and then the next, the slides following that are the agricultural operations. So one of the topics that was brought up had to do with the pathways, specifically how they would relate to a public benefit. So within the master plan document that was adopted, there were a couple different variations as you, as you look closely in this location. One was, you had a pathway running up Baker Road, kind of on the, would be to the east of the site. The other one contemplated some sort of a bridge over 94, and the pathway ran up would be the east side of, of the primary property in this location, running up to Marshall Road in this area. So what we've done in terms of our plan is to put in easements in the site plan. Go back here a second. So there's an easement, there's this dash line shows where an easement would be for a future pathway, whenever it's decided, wherever that would be. And then in addition to that, there would be one that would potentially connect from this location out to Baker Road if, if a path were to find itself in that location. So I think the, the, what we thought would be a reasonable approach, given the, perhaps the uncertainty where these paths may end up being. So someone obviously put some thought into this, this concept, and I believe the comment that the prior commissioner made is, it may be a long time before that bridge gets built. Maybe this is an alternative, but, you know, there's, in either case, there are M-dot implications to whatever happens with the pathways here. Just for point of reference, there's a photo of the Baker Road looking south. There's a large, you know, shoulder here that could be used for a pathway if that's what the township decides is a good location, or if that's what M-dot approves, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of things that need to go into that analysis. But to end the discussion on the public pathway clarifications, what we're proposing to do as far as the project, which we've indicated, is to dedicate an easement for future pathway routing on the property that's been integrated into the site plan. That's approximately two-thirds of a mile in length. Then in addition to that, we would provide a monetary contribution to the pathway fund to be, you know, partially consistent with other PUD precedents in the township for that, for this particular public benefit. Now, I think that, you know, I think once the pathway has decided where it's going, and so this, this sort of, in combination with the easements and this monetary approach, we felt that addressed the public benefit requirement, gave the township flexibility with, you know, using those funds where it made sense in terms of future planning that would go on in that particular topic. Any questions on pathways before we move on?
Any discussion?
You know, I will say that we did discuss this briefly at our last TAP Transportation Alternative Plan meeting. We need to probably talk about it in more depth, I think, at our next meeting. But I, you know, gleaned from it, there's no way we're going to build a bridge over 94 to connect to this path, so that's probably not on the table with the expense and future connections. But, you know, we are going to want some type of pathway on the site, so we'll look into that further.
Rather than not just an easement, but an actual constructed pathway?
Oh, yeah, I was going to bring that up probably more towards the end, but the petitioner should know we'll, you know, we'll have to explore that not only will there be the easement, that you may be constructing that pathway also. But that's something we're going to discuss.
In lieu of the funds.
Yes, in lieu of the funds, that's correct.
That question was originally was, has anybody been discussing this with TAP? It needs to be done.
Yes, it will be on, it probably will be on next month's agenda.
I think our, I think our point is that we're flexible in terms of dealing with understanding that it's a public benefit, and we're obviously willing to do that in the context of prior precedents in the township.
Thank you.
And then coming to the agricultural operations discussion, we're certainly sensitive to the neighbors in the area in terms of their concerns. Obviously, the, the neighbor to the west operates a dairy farm, they operate under the Michigan Right to Farm Act, which protects their rights in terms of, of people complaining about them, I guess, for nuisance complaints. So they're protected in terms of their operations, I think everyone understands that or recognizes that. What we're proposing to do to address that neighbor concern is to, within the master deed for the project, we would have an inclusion that would address this item by incorporating into the master deed bylaws a reference notice or disclosure regard to raise awareness of adjoining agricultural area and operations that may, that may include livestock. So we're basically learning any future evidence or future residents in terms of their, what may happen, what happens in the area, what may happen in the future. So they're, they're, it's in writing that they understood that was a condition of their
Will include livestock.
It depends on which way the wind's blowing, right?
Usually blows out of the west.
Okay. All right, well, anyway, yeah, right. I guess on a personal note, my great-grandparents operated a dairy farm in southwest Minnesota, so I'm, you know, sort of understand what they're talking about.
Very much so.
Okay, so the next topic, next topic that was raised, unless there's any other questions here, the next topic that was raised was for the consultant review letters in a response to those. We're not going to speak through consultants, but I can go to the correspondence if you'd like, but within that, there were a couple of slides that we shared briefly at the last meeting that spoke to, I think, the primary two questions or clarifications in the Carlisle Workman letter. That had to do with the question about the parking proposed for the project. And just to clarify how it got to the parking number that was proposed, that's the blue text here in terms of the independence versus assisted versus staff versus visitors, and we talked about this at the last meeting. That's how the calculation was derived as compared to a zoning code calculation. I would also add that the senior living facility also has a transportation van, which has, typically has the residence age, though they opt for the van versus, you know, versus driving, which is understandable. And then the other item that is raised in the letter requires some clarification was the MR3 deviation summary. So on the left, you see what, what's allowed in MR3, what's in blue is the, what's provided or proposed. And far right column, what's in green or red is, is how it complies or, or a deviation is requested. I think in terms of density, the comparison here is, is significant in terms of, it's not dense relative to what's allowed under MR3. In terms of, using, in terms of the building height, there's a slight change from 35 to 44, this being requested. And then in some of the building separation distances, which, which really vary throughout the site plan, in some cases they comply, other cases, there's, in the case of this one, there's one deviation requested. Case of the duplex units, there's 20 feet that separates the side to side or end to end, as they're referring to it here. Which if you compare that to an R4 single family, the side yard setback is 10 feet, so it's not, it's not like too dissimilar to that. For the last one, there's a couple of cases where, or conditions where there's a slight deviation. Again, these conditions vary throughout the property, I don't think anything that's proposed or shown is, is highly unusual comparatively.
Those building separations, excuse, just a quick question, those building separations, they'll meet emergency access and building codes?
Yes.
Are these all things that the fire chief?
Yeah, and these are meant, I mean, I think the explanation is that MR3, that's a multifamily, and usually you're looking at much larger buildings, and just spatially, you typically do more space between large buildings than you do, and these are duplexes that are smaller.
So it won't be visually impacting you the same way?
Right.
I was more concerned about the, the number of floors, is our fire code, is our, are our fire equipment able to reach three-story?
Yes, and in fact, one of the ordinance updates we're trying to look at is increasing that because it becomes a deviation that's been granted multiple times and requested multiple times. And it used to be in a queue, basically, and it's no longer one with fire.
I believe, I believe if I could interject, if when you approved the Woodview Commons project, that had a similar request in, or deviation request in it. And then with respect to Madam Chair's comment, there's a note down here as, as referenced, all the villas and duplexes are one-story, so it's really, a lot of these, a lot of these set better requirements are really assumed to be for multi-story buildings as opposed There's no other questions on that, and I don't know if you want to involve your consultants at this point in discussing the letters, they can, any further, but those are the main two takeaways. I think the other comment I'll make is that the, the gist of the other, the gist of the consultant letters were that any items that were there could be handled in final PUD steps or submitted.
Thank you. I want to ask if either Suwan or if OHM has any other questions or items that you feel they did not address?
We do not have time to review this project, so I've done no further comments. TAP could wear that.
Similar here, there was no formal resubmitment, so our letter stands the same as you saw it two weeks ago at the last meeting.
What's the next step?
So the next step is, it's currently tabled.
Well, I mean, you know, your next steps would be to recommend, you make a motion, make a motion of some sort, whether to recommend approval, denial, or approval with conditions to the township.
The question was-
I'm going to deny the project, the Heritage Village project, the PUD.
For reasons?
Well, for reasons that I think that it's, it's huge for the area. I'm not sure that some of these hydraulics, these hydrology questions have been answered, that we know, that we, I feel comfortable, I'll just speak for myself, as one commissioner on this commission, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this project. I realize that this project was conceived before I became a commissioner. It seems, though, as though there were efforts made prior to my being commissioner to change our master plan to allow for this project, as well as this Sloan project, which, you know, I, I think we need to dial it back some. You know, when I first saw this project, it was a one-story senior citizen, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, now we're up to a three-story senior citizen housing facility, and we're up to, it's increased even more by the number of units, what is it, up to
Yeah, it increased from 92 to 120.
120, yeah.
Yeah, and that would have been for the senior citizen facility. Is that correct? And my personal view is that that is not in keeping with the rural environment that we keep talking about, that's marbled through our master plan. So I would, I, that's why I bring this motion before the commission, because I'm not in favor of this kind of huge, what I consider huge, I apologize, it can have different meanings to different people. And look at what we're doing, and a case in point, this entrance. We're making this entrance work, and I get it, it's not Mr. Johnson that's making this entrance work, it's, M-dot has weighed in and all kinds of stuff. And we're impeding on the egress and interest of the folks that live on Baker Road to try to make this work, this project, because some people in our community are committed to this project for various reasons. And I just think it should be dialed back. And I've said this before at prior meetings before this commission, and before I had the opportunity to weigh in. And I'm also concerned about this Sloan project. But I get it, I'm just one commissioner, and my viewpoint, it may not be shared by the other commissioners, and that's why I'm bringing this motion, to deny this project
And so it's primarily the density?
The density is big, yeah.
And I think you also brought up the entrance issues are not, and I still, I would second that, that it is a unclear how it would be finalized at this point. In my mind, I don't really, I don't quite feel comfortable, but I wasn't thinking of rejecting it, I was thinking of finding a solution. But you made the motion first. Could somebody react to the motion?
You would require a second, so I'll get that.
She's just proposing a motion that, and stating that she would, she would support something to deny, and so it's part of the discussion, basically, of the motion. And you're saying you're uncomfortable with the entrance, but you weren't necessarily thinking of a deny?
I was thinking that there might be a solution that would make it more palatable to the neighbors. In fact, they're, they're not saying that they have a solution yet, because they need to discuss it with the neighbors in order to get permission to make use of the property. So until that gets okay, and I don't know if it's at this stage, I would think so, because if you can't get that, then it wouldn't really move forward yet. So that's where I was thinking that we would try to resolve it, but you have even stronger concerns.
I do.
I'd probably chime in and say, the petitioner really, I think, addressed a lot of the concerns from the last meeting, as far as the hydrological evaluation, the drainage. From what I've gathered, there's plug drains, they're going to not make the situation worse, but I would think improve the situation. You know, there's, there's something, the open space, I like that they've actually kind of condensed it, and they've given us, well, at least offered 59% open space as opposed to the 30%, that's almost twice as much that's required. I will tell you from a TAP perspective, if we're going to get a pathway, or at least a combination of a pathway and a pathway fund, and I will just say this, this is in the preliminary stage. So this by all means doesn't mean that it's going to get voted for approval at, you know, when they come in with a final PUD, because I would be looking for all of this and then- some, you know, there's, I recall at the last meeting that, you know, there was worry about trespassing. I'm going to, I'm going to want to see, you know, conflicting land use buffers with vegetation and fences to prevent any type of, you know, trespassing. I'll tell you, as a public benefit, you're asking for 100, what did I write, 163 parking spaces when 100 are required, there'll be, there'll be a request for, you know, EV parking stations out there. So, you know, I'm probably the opposite, I do support what they're proposing. The master plan does state it was approved for housing to accommodate the township's aging population, including 55 and over, so it's actually, you know, following what the township plan is stating, so. But again, my, kind of my disclaimer is, this is just preliminary PUD, does not mean I would vote, you know, in favor, but I wouldn't vote for to deny the proposal at this stage, and for sure, I'd probably go the opposite direction, I'd make a motion for approval. So I know we're at odds commissioner more, so.
And I think that's, I think that's perfectly fair, but I would say point of order, Your Honor, I mean, Madam Chair, if there's a motion on the table, if there's a second, or if the court, oh my God. If the chair would ask.
Your rankings coming through there.
I know, I'm, I'm switching my roles. If the chair would ask if there's a second, I would appreciate it.
All right, is there a second?
That's it?
All right. To continue our discussion, I think if you look at the, I mean, the overall density of the site isn't, when you look at it as, how many units per acre, did it end up being like four or something?
3.3 acres. 3.3.
3.3. And if you look at the.
What is 3.3?
The density of this particular project.
The density, is that per person, per owner, per building?
That's units per acre, so that would be.
Living units.
A living unit.
Not, not a building, but a living unit count.
So like rooms and separate homes and that, okay. And that's, and that's 3.3 acres per unit, and that's stretched out over the.
Develop it.
Property or the entire amount of property?
The entire amount of the property, okay. And that's, that's typically the way that you look at, at density. And, you know, an agriculture, if it was even, what was it, in egg, it's one per five, is that right? Five acres per.
Two and a half, two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres per. So if they wanted to develop it, you know, as single-family homes, you know, it, you know, 2.5.
Minus wetlands and, and other things, so you wouldn't actually get to that number without filling in it.
Well, you could, I mean, if you, if you did a PUD and you did, I mean, you know, whatever. I mean, what I'm saying is the 3.3 isn't, is it close to like the high end of density in different areas of, of the township? And I think when you're looking at density along Baker Road, Baker Road right at the intersection of a freeway, and that's why the master plan was developed in a way that in, also in discussion with the, the city of Dexter, that that was an area that they would support increasing density over what we had originally, and as long as it, we didn't promote more commercial development. Because they, they do want, they do want more, you know, residences to support existing commercial districts in Dexter. And so that was some of the reasoning behind, you know, looking at the master plan, and this was also an area serviced, even though it didn't have sewer, it's served by water. So when you have some of those utilities, you have, you're close to the highway, those are areas that it makes sense, if you're going to control growth in other areas of the township, those are the areas that, that you want to promote, and in this case specifically residential. So that was some of the, the background behind doing that, yeah.
And I will say though, I find it a little bit of a stretch to call this Baker Road development, since the only thing on Baker Road is the entrance. But they have tried very hard, from the Marshall Road standpoint, from the road, limiting the visual impact. From the farmer's point of view, they're going to see it quite distinctly from their fields, and, but, so there's always that, but it is, Baker Road is a little bit of a stretch to say, except for the fact that we've got the facilities, the water, the roadway, infrastructure to handle, the number of cars that are going to be coming and going, it's, so Baker Road is the artery that would be tied into.
I think, yeah.
That's the why, why dense growth would be there, allowed there.
And I, I think my, my concerns about, you know, we, the other thing that we put in the master plan was net zero-ready development, and I think it is, you know, to have the solar farm there and say future, I understand that there are issues with serving the duplexes and complexes, but there probably would not be an issue with serving the senior facility if it had a single meter. And there might, I, I think you need to really look at that in more detail. And there was a quasi-commitment to lead certifying the duplexes and the single story, but I'd be more interested in performance, like a first rating, and net zero-ready, there is an actually criteria for net zero-ready, and then applying some sort of performance to the senior living facility as well. Because if you look at what's happening from a sustainability standpoint, if we don't bring on new buildings that are at least net zero-ready with the capacity to produce their own energy or to purchase renewables, we're not going to make a headway, you know, we're digging the hole deeper. The other one would be a commitment, except for perhaps a generator, that it would be an all-electric development. These are things from a, you know, sustainability that we really need to take and make sure that there's a, a commitment to that. If we're going to bring in something of this density with so many people living there, we need to have a, you know, we have a community plan with the county now, with a goal of carbon neutrality by 2035. You know, if, if this is, you know, a facility that's, you know, only going to be 10 years old at that point, they're not going to be replacing your HVAC and that kind of thing. It needs to be ready now.
Do we have the, does DTE have the transmission lines available that could handle this number of units as a net zero?
If they were, if they're designed to be net zero-ready, meaning the efficiency of that was in place, the issue for the, with the assisted living is going to be the generator capacity. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're going to have to have fossil fuels for that, or propane or something like that, because we don't have the, you know, the, the solar storage at this point, but, yeah. So I know you're.
Why couldn't the building be a solar, be, for instance, a solar, I mean, I think you bring up some good points there about sustainability issues. Why couldn't the senior citizen facility, for instance, be a solar-powered facility with backup batteries?
With that, well, the, the backup there, it's, the backup is, we're even investigating it for like fire stations and stuff, and it is, at this point, a little tough, because you need 24/7 capacity, and that's a lot of generation for a building that size. So however, you know.
So why would we even have a building that size that could not even meet sustainability concerns?
Oh, it can, it can be net zero if you're purchasing off-site renewables, but the issue is they need 24, you need a certain level of backup for an assisted living facility, okay? You can't, and relying on batteries at this point is a little bit, it's a little expensive. So we're not quite there, but it could be designed to be able to convert to all battery when that became financially feasible.
I think what you're thinking, are they agreeable?
Yeah, I don't know, do you want to respond?
Sure, can you still hear me?
Sure can.
Right, so, you know, this is a repeat of the slide that we shared at the last meeting. We didn't go into all the detail, but we were proposing EV charging in each duplex and villa unit, and as Mr. Chang mentioned, likely include that as part of the senior living facility, some percentage as well. And we talked about lead certification to a bronze level for the duplex villas and the duplexes in the villa units last time, and these are some examples of elements within what that certification means. We talked about a future solar farm site area, and now that discussion there was along the lines of there's currently some legislation being considered advancing for, it's referred to as community solar, because of the rules with the franchise utilities, DTE in this case, you have limitations in terms of what you can do. However, to Commissioner, Madam Commissioner's point, the opportunity, we've looked at really kind of three things. One is we could power the CWUS system off the solar, we can power the street lighting off the solar, we could power, potentially power the senior living facility off the solar, and then possibly do more in terms of the branch, branch villas. Now, this is all being studied and would be, you know, presented at a final PUD stage, where we've got a solar consultant looking at this in more detail. But there's legislation pending that could change the picture quite a bit, but we're certainly serious about doing some level of the solar for the project. We'd like the opportunity to develop that more further in the final PUD proposal.
Yeah, and like I said, I'd rather see, when you do lead certification, I think there are some first rating, I'm not that, I'm not as familiar with the lead for homes, but to me, it's the performance and meeting, you know, your infiltration standards and building them more efficiently than code, like, well, we can get into the details, but, and then the same thing with the senior living facility, you haven't made a, a commitment to a performance for the senior living, living facility either. And I, I think that should be, that's an important part of a project that is as large as this. So any thoughts on that?
Is that a question for me or for the other commissioners?
The other commissioners. Despite all the things that I've taken notes about, we haven't all the answers yet, is what I would still say.
Good night.
I think the biggest, I mean, I think, you know, some additional commitments along these initiatives, and I think we're trying to resolve how we're going to do that entryway and the geometry and the easements needed for that service drive, though I think.
Could I, could I interject on the service drive?
Yeah.
Slide, so as we mentioned, I'll scan back to this real quickly. So we have, we have ways to accomplish the turnaround without involving Mr. Katz's property. I just want to make sure that's a clear point, I don't think it was, in terms of the comments from the, Mr. Hayes comments, so we can accomplish this without dealing with this location here, either by a combination of this, this, or this above, and so I'm shifting of things, I, I think we're pretty confident that we can deal with that turnaround in the context of this without involving this property, if there's not a desire on their part to, to be involved.
I think it's one more thing, I don't know, can you go back? Yeah, right there. The concern of making a turn out of the service drive and then swinging south without being able to go further north like they currently do in order to make use of that driveway that's there right now, and swing wide partly in the, that driveway on the west side of the road, they're cut off from doing that with a, with the divider, and I know you said that you could put, I forget what you called it.
Where's that? Yeah, truck apron, the truck apron element, you see a lot of that in some of the roundabouts, there's truck aprons used in the roundabout features as well. So that allows, allows for that to happen.
So they have to swing into runway traffic, you know, into the boulevard entrance to exit. So I'm just saying, did you take everything into account that they've brought up tonight?
Does that, little medium, this medium here?
Yeah, that's a.
Does that come all the way out this far?
Yeah. It's their barrier that they.
So one of the ideas, maybe this medium not come out so far, which would give some more room here to come out.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I think there are a couple things here, plus we have the Eagle public comment piece coming out in February, and I'm wondering if there would be a support for a table in motion. And that would give our consultants time to review the updated things, we could, you have a little bit more time to research the sustainability pieces, work on the entrance way, we get more feedback, we can get the Hird River Watershed Council to, to review the hyper-geological information.
I would propose that we table it until we get these, these things more fully understood.
Can I, can I hear, Doug, you probably prefer the table, to allow additional time for your staff to review the systems engineering and.
Yeah, and I think the preliminary PUD is supposed to go over several items. One of them is qualifications for the project, for the PUD to be applied to it, and one of those criteria is that a recognizable material benefit to ultimate users of the project and the community, where such benefit would otherwise be unlikely, or unfeasible and unlikely. You guys have talked about a lot of that stuff together with the carbon neutrality and things like that, maybe the applicant can expand upon that. There's also a section in the qualifications about, the proposed development shall minimize any negative impacts upon surrounding properties. Obviously, we've heard tonight from residents that there are some negative impacts on surrounding properties that hasn't been resolved. We're also supposed to be looking at general design considerations. The design considerations also get into circulation, streets, drainage, which gets into the issue raised by some of the, or some of the residents this evening. So I think there's two of the major things we're supposed to be looking at, and then design standards is the last thing we're supposed to be looking at as part of preliminary PUD, and that also gets into items like transportation, vehicular circulation. So I think both the qualification first. So I think both the qualification for, qualification for PUD, the design considerations, and the design standards, all sections in the PUD standard that we're supposed to be looking at, applicant could do more to address those as part of the preliminary PUD.
Okay, then I think we have a, we have a motion to table. Yeah, or no? Yes, okay.
Waiting for me to say yes?
I'm sorry.
You do have a motion to table.
It's hard without the lips, you know? Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. And the concerns are, as discussed, particularly around the community benefit, which wouldn't end.
Design considerations and design standards.
And the design considerations and design standards. Any further discussion on the motion? Right. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
No.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay.
Pass this through to one.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our last slide. Our next order of business, which is the consideration of minor or major site plan amendment for site plan number 21022, the Slack of Yocum. With a PUD, the PUD, the PUD had a separate name, right?
Yeah, it's a Kirkway Asile.
Thank you.
PUD they're looking for an amendment. Really, it's because this is a PUD. This is the kind of thing that would typically go in front of the zoning law, setback terms. But because it's part of the PUD, it has to be first made a determination that this would be considered a minor amendment, publicity. And I gave you guys two motions that would address those two things. And so there are, there are various issues that classify a PUD amendment as either a minor PUD amendment or a major PUD amendment.
Oh, yeah.
And those should be in the two motions I gave you and in our memo. And in this particular case, the applicant has a deck. Decks actually can encroach into a rear yard setback as long as they're not covered. Well, the applicant in this case might cover their deck. And so that now becomes a structure, and structures cannot extend into the rear yard setback. So they are requesting to extend the, or kind of modify the existing deck, make it a three-season or four-season porch or whatever, and are requesting a minor amendment or an amendment in the PUD. It's first up to the planning commission to determine if this is a major or minor amendment. There's very specific items that fall into the major amendment category that things like changing, the density are changing, the road layouts are changing, open space. Really, none of that's happening here. We listed those in our December 21 memorandum. It's our opinion that this is a minor amendment to the PUD. The difference being that if the planning commission was determined, was to determine that this would be a major amendment, they would have to go back through the PUD process and have a public hearing for the project. I will also note that I saw in the packet that some of the adjacent neighbors were in favor of this as well as the homeowners association. So again, we are in favor of the planning commission calling this a minor amendment. And then once it's considered a minor amendment, there would be approval of the proposal. But there has been two motions. Sorry.
How nice it was.
Oh, how much more comfortable I would have been.
All right. So the first order of business is determine whether it's a minor or a major site plan amendment and.
I think that's good.
And then you have to vote on the major.
On the major.
So you turn two, two motions.
Did we have an applicant here? I feel sorry for these guys.
Yeah, so if you're the applicant, please. Oh, we do, we do. I'll have to see a hand up. I promote Rick Foley as, as a panelist and bless you for sticking around this long.
Thank you, this is not one of us. This isn't the longest, but it is one of the longest. So thank you for sticking it out.
No, no, Robin, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. My name is Rick Foley. I'm representing the Peggy Yocum and Kim Slack and Dexter Builders, which I have prepared a drawing.
We lost your audio.
Can you still hear me?
We can now.
Okay, excellent, excellent. The, the property, as you can see, is it butts up against the rear wetlands at the adjoining property. And the main concern is a kind of a, a little bit of a health and safety due to no mitigation from any kind of flying insects, mosquitoes in general. And unfortunately, it made clients face most unusable without being screened in. And they hired us to kind of do the investigation. I've applied the document preparation to this meeting today. We would like to see, to build a structure inside the actual parameters of the existing deck and add the roof as previously mentioned and screen the walls for protection against said mosquitoes.
So just a clarification, this isn't like a three-season room. It is just a screened porch.
That's correct. Unconditioned, three-season room with screened walls.
Okay, are there questions from the commissioners?
Seems pretty minor to me.
Screening the floors too?
Yes, yes.
That's where people forget.
I may have just one quick question, and since it's already a deck there, the residents, the neighbors, they don't have any, it sounds like they approved this, but are there any drainage issues that this is going to have any rainwater that may cause a nuisance on adjacent properties?
No, sir, there, it actually drains to a swale in the wetlands, in the rear of the property. There, there's a pretty good elevation change, and everything from all the properties drain into that.
You're not, you're not going to put a foundation on this area?
Actually, I do have to replace the footings on the deck posts due to more load from the roof.
Footings only.
But footings, round, round cylinder footings.
Yeah, yeah, tiers, yeah. But you're not putting a skirt all the way to the ground.
No, sir.
Yep. Still going to be a deck.
Correct.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the commissioner? Then entertain a motion, one that has to be the, whether it's a minor or a major.
I'm not sure, I've looked at both of these. They seem to be applicable to a minor, but I'll go with this one. Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the development of a PUD minor amendment and grants cause, and good cause and grants the approval of the amendment. Is that the wrong motion?
I think we have to find that it is a minor.
Yeah, first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there are two motions.
Right. Wasn't sure which, okay. We'll, we'll scratch the first one. Based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, planning commission finds that the subject amendment to the development named PUD is a minor in nature in making this determination. The commission, the planning commission has reviewed section 36-254 of zoning ordinance.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Moore and seconded by Commissioner Hyde. Any, is that a minor amendment? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson?
Yes. And then. Then we need to do the motion to approve the amendment.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Want to do that one again?
Sure.
Hold on.
Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the development named PUD minor amendment shows good cause and grants the amendment. And grants the approval of the amendment.
And it's conditioned upon the following, that it's a screened porch within the footprint of, yeah, the.
Isn't that what was proposed?
Of the existing deck.
Would we typically read that as part of it, since that was what they proposed?
I just want to make sure that it is within the screened. Um, yeah, and the footprint of the deck. Is that a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Is there a support for that? A second, a second from Commissioner Hyde? Any further discussion? All those, oh, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. And Commissioner Culberson?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. Whoa, no problem.
Yeah, you still have, no, you still have to go on to the township board.
Township, it has, this is a recommendation to the township board, so.
Okay, so.
It will be taken up when we, after we approve the minutes of this meeting, which will be at our next meeting, which unfortunately is going to be the 21st of February. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Should I follow up with Fran?
Yes, that'd be good start.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, then I, the next item of business is, we have a memo from Carlisle Wartman, and I just wanted us to touch base on, this would be the work that is in progress for the planning commission who would like to be in progress looking at zoning ordinance amendments. And so I just, I wanted to, you know, because this has, one, there's budgeting involved, two, we want to, it's not like this is an exhaustive list, but is there other priorities for the list? Are people in agreement that these are the ordinances that we want to look at? Are there additional ordinances that people want to look at?
There's no list on here, or is there a? We had ventured to make a list of things for the ZOA quite a few months ago, and I'd have to look at, one was the, the ordinance regarding the decibel limits.
That's the noise ordinance, and that is.
The noise ordinance will take care of that.
That is not going to be zoning. That is going to be a township ordinance. And so that's the one that they, the, it's already, the board hasn't approved it yet, but it's going directly to the board of trustees. They're doing their, handling that. And did you see the Carlisle Wartman?
No.
Okay.
It's on page.
Yeah, because it has the, yeah.
565.
Okay, 565.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I already, I separated mine out by.
How do you do that with?
I do it, I print, I can save to a PDF. And so I can save. Yeah.
I don't have Adobe.
You can segregate out pages.
If you have Adobe.
Using Adobe feature.
Yeah, we have Adobe.
You know what, we may, I'm just.
I liked how the trustees have their packets there with hyperlinks from the cover page, from the agenda. So you click on the hyperlink and it takes you to that section.
Yeah, we'll have that, and I'm wondering if they've been trying that in, we'll have to request if there's a custom to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we should be able to do it for us too, so. All right, so we have the noise ordinance, events ordinance.
I do a lot, but I don't do that.
I was just saying, it's done. I couldn't do it.
Okay.
I do have a comment about, a question about the PUD.
Yeah.
Or anything that is. Is that, is this just, did you just say it's just zoning or?
So it would be the zoning ordinance, yeah, because we only have any general ordinances. We don't have jurisdiction overall.
Yeah, but I put, I put some both, because occasionally the zoning ordinance amendment committee in the past has looked at general ordinances, because the township board requests them to do that. But, so there's kind of a mixture of both zoning and general ordinances in that list.
So, so the question was, did you get that one in there where the language of the, of the parallel plan calculations wasn't based on the same? It didn't have the wording in there of the underlying, sorry, no, or the master.
The master plan.
Didn't reference the master plan for the parallel.
Yeah, I think I did, because we, we, there was, there was a, I've already made quite a bit of progress on the PUDs.
Okay.
So, so these are, the list is, I think I mentioned where I don't work on the ordinance. And so I guess the point here is, is some of this stuff's already done or hacked on. Should we just convene the zoning ordinance amendment committee and just pull over this stuff generally and then have, you know, or, you know, there's only four members in the planning commission right now, so.
Well, I think the intent of this was saying, okay, you're working on some things. There are some things in progress. And then there's sort of like, and those are things that we've already kind of identified around, discussion and so forth. Then there were this list, you know, that talks about strengthening the tree preservation ordinance, review, solar approval to look at expedited permitting, setback waivers. Those are some of the things that have come out of some of the state provisioning in, I think Ann Arbor as a, we have to collaborate with the county on part of it, but there might be a zoning kind of thing. Looking at, you know, looking at our density bonuses and so forth to look at net zero development. Because we don't have any kind of density bonus other than open space, BMPs. I think there's one more, right? Or is it just those, no, it's just. Or is it just those, no, it's just?
Uh, open space, there's, there's three.
Yeah, three, I mean, they have to do two out of the three.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the EV charging, solar ready, um, increasing the building heights to three stories and Jackson Road.
Sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, yeah. And then the whole thing, this is the, this is the one thing that, um, is, how do we align better our zoning with the high priority agriculture and preservation parcels? And I don't know if there's a, uh, you know, that may be a discussion, you know, between LPC, BARRY, um, and, you know, how we can align, align that. Issues around stormwater, um, if you look at the soils along Jackson Road and some other, because we have really good infiltration generally, and how do we, I mean, is there anything that we need to do? Can we improve our stormwater above what maybe the county has? I don't know if there's provisions for it. Or do more that, um, you know, the green infrastructure? And, and require more green infrastructure as opposed to, you know, the, the pipe kind of infrastructure pieces? And then incentives for native adaptive landscape rather than reduction of turf grass. So I don't know, those were some things, just based on, you know, looking at the master plan and some of the values that we have in that, um, thoughts, priorities, that's kind of, I just didn't want to launch into something if we didn't have more of a consensus on what we wanted to tackle.
Wish I'd given more attention to this list.
Okay, well, that's fine. I don't think there's anything, you know, I think there's plenty to start working on that is partially done, and so if we want to, um, just, uh, make sure we get other, you know, Jackie is out, Rakesha's out, and, yeah. So if people could, uh, we'll just leave it at that, then commissioners to take a little closer look and, um, either add or, and, and look at maybe prioritizing, because obviously it's a long list, and you're not going to tackle everything at once. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay, um, moving on to reports, commission activity, anything from OAM? Stacy or...
No report. No report tonight.
Okay, um, Doug?
Nothing.
Nothing. We don't have really anything new from, since our last meeting with, um, other than I, I do want to say we are not going to have a Valentine's Day meeting. The 214 is, is going to be shifted to 221, and then we will have our regularly scheduled 228 meeting. Okay. And nothing new on, um, candidates either. Still working on that.
Oh.
Yep. Board of Trustees, I don't have anything from Jackie. Zoning Court of Appeals, we just had a, a meeting and we denied a setback variance for a, a large, it was a real setback variance for a large, um, outbuilding. We've had quite a few of those coming in. Okay, DDA, we still need a rep. And, uh, nothing from both advisory, because Chuck was not here, LPC?
Yeah, let me see.
No report. All right, ZOA, you're going to start meeting.
Yeah, it's like, it's all legged.
It sounds like you should start meeting and get rolling on at least the things that you're... Yeah, and then we'll continue. Parks and Rec?
We canceled our last meeting. We have a meeting in, on next Tuesday.
Okay, TAP?
Yeah, we, we kind of discussed it tonight. We did discuss, uh, the project that we had tonight, so we're going to probably discuss that again next month regarding the pathway, as this seems to be on, you know, the front burner now. And then we just discussed the quadrants, updates, the ZB road project's still moving along really, really well as far as funding and construction.
Okay, great. Okay, Henry Verwetschel Council?
Well, as you said, we're going to have to make them aware of the, um, public hearing for Heritage Farms. I don't know if you have a point of contact? The only points of contact I have are the people that are on the, you know, the trustees, but...
Um, I'll, I'll follow up. It was Jason Frenzel that I emailed, and he, I'll find out who's working on this stuff and let him know that it sounds like there's going to be a public hearing in February with the data. Because I know they had, they were, at least had, were aware of it and had started looking at it, so.
That's good. And they also canceled their January meeting.
Oh.
Due to COVID concerns. Because they're also required to be back in person. I didn't realize.
Oh, because they're a public body?
I'm not sure what the rationale was, but that was what it said in the email, unless I read it wrong, but that's how, why they canceled it. They weren't ready to go back in person. So that was earned.
Yeah. All right, so then, um, pre-amp rotations, I think those are in the minutes. So we'll move to the minutes of our 110 meeting, which were emailed out and then added in the package later.
I got three, I didn't see anything. Bothered me. I don't check your spelling. I think you covered things mostly. I still have, I'm reading about the hydrology issues impacting Mill Creek and the groundwater from the heritage. So it's in these minutes, it was in tonight's discussion, and it's still in my head. Uh, the Eagle, it should be brought up at the public hearing. And do we bring things up? Questions to Eagle about?
I think we could.
I mean, I don't know the ethic of it.
And whether the public hearing, I guess the other question is whether the public hearing is going to, they, to either have, um, online options? Yeah, or if we have to be in...
That would be nasty. If they didn't continue. Did they used to only be in person? I, I mean, I don't have any experience.
I don't know.
I'm sure you did.
You know?
Well, sometimes they, they will have them at the community, at, at, if you request, they'll be, they can very happy hear.
Oh.
For like, well, permits and stuff, sometimes they'll...
They'll come here, but, but, yeah. So I guess we have to find out about that, don't we? Who would be the person?
I, I, I don't know. I could follow up on when, I, I'm not, I haven't been notified of a public hearing for this, so.
Right, I don't think, yeah.
Usually those notifications go to the township clerk.
But they're going to identify where it's going to be when they do the notification, so to get ahead of it, if we wanted to have it here, or, I guess the issue is, can we have it here? Or will there be opportunity for the public to engage via?
Zoom.
Zoom, or whatever.
But that might hurt. Eagle does Zoom, that's what I know. I mean, they're part of it.
Because I know MPC has been doing, um, there's, a lot of their stuff online still, even though they're, I guess, just in town, okay.
So we have the minutes discussion.
Any, any other, are, any? Do we, do we have to say hydrogeological? Is that the correct term instead of hydrological?
That's what they call this, hydrogeologic.
It, it is, because it involves the word, word, water flow.
So we should correct the minutes to say hydrogeological?
Would you please? Do you know where it is?
I, I do not, where is it?
It's on page, um, oh, I was just looking at it.
It's going to be under Heritage Woods, correct?
Correct.
Heritage Woods.
Under the, under the, uh...
Page 560, oh, you're not in there.
Yeah, I actually printed the note, so.
So it's under the...
Here we go, it's item number four.
Concerns by the Planning Commission, number three. Three, um, four, three, three sub four, I don't know. And that would be usually three A or three B, but, number one, two, three, four.
Just, so I'm looking at the same one, right? We're looking at this.
Yeah, hydrogeological.
Hydro.
Instead of hydrology.
Yeah, it's hydrogeological. I noticed that when you put it up there, I thought, ooh, I was calling it hydrological.
I thought, well, maybe...
Okay.
I think it's the geologicals.
Maybe that's a different.
Hydrology.
So, you know, why, you know, shining through.
I'm taking your word out.
Hydrogeological. Any other additions or corrections to that?
Move to approve the minutes as revised.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. All of those, and, oh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously, and then I, uh, any other items? Right, uh, motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn? So... This is the pre-amp information, yeah.
Oh.
Whether to make it public, to make it, make all the commissioners know. Because I think it's a good idea.
I don't know what we're talking about right now.
Well, that was deliberate, so that I could find out whether I should let you know. Well, in a pre-application meeting that I attended in Jan, in Commissioner Colvinson's place, the Knights of Columbus people indicated what they had in mind when they said that they had something that they wanted to bring before us. Remember how they, they wanted us to table it? And the reason for tabling was, they're going to propose, or they're thinking of proposing bringing water under the freeway from Jackson Road corridor to their development as part of a potential township use to make a loop, a northern loop, as the township has explored in the past, that would possibly cover the houses that are, that the plume is entering their well of water. So they would get on well, they would get on, um, uh, community water, municipal water from Ann Arbor and through the township, and they would make it available for a future tie-in.
Make it available for what?
For a future tie-in, for those communities along Wagner and Dexter and Ann Arbor Road that have now, um, started to get detectable levels of dioxin. So depending on what the future brings, that may be a proposal. They haven't made that proposal officially yet, have they? And so it's just something that we knew they were going to, they were thinking of doing something, and they wanted us to wait. They brought it up, and there it is.
At, at the developer's expense?
Well, there's talk of shared cause. I mean, of course. Give and take, but yeah. So I don't really know.
So we would...
I don't really know what the final offer is going to be.
So they would be asking us to share in that cost, possibly?
Yeah, I mean, it was, I think so, but not really. They would, they would bring it there, and they would let, an easement be used by the township. So that's worth some money, is how they put it.
So we wouldn't be asked to pay for the water for the development, but maybe the water for the other folks' wells?
Oh, yeah, definitely, for the rest of the place, it would be, it would not be their cost. But they're talking about bringing it over there and making a, um, a, not really a stub, but a lollipop, they call it? Where it brings it to a dead end, but it has a loop in there. So there's water flow, and there wouldn't be a stagnant point, which would be bad to just have a stub that doesn't have water flow, and then you have to turn your, you know, the plumbing, the, whatever.
So, I mean, that, I guess that's an interesting possibility, and, and with the infrastructure money that's available now, the timing might be good, too. Because it would, it would future-proof that, um, you know, the, the issues around the plume, for sure.
That would get to the issue of the, whether or not the construction itself would open up the plume to...
I couldn't hear you.
That would, that still doesn't get to the issue of the construction itself opening up the plume to move further.
Well, this would keep it from being drawn there by the extraction of large amounts of water that would cause the, the groundwater to flow in that direction more than it would otherwise. So they would not be affecting it by drawing water out of the ground. Whereas if they had their community well, the concern that I had, or that a lot of people had, was that this might, might, unknown, cause migration of the dioxin head in that direction more than it would all on its own due to other reasons that it's flowing. I mean, it's flowing due to diffusion and pressure differentials and, you know, concentration level differentials. All sorts of things are causing it to flow where it's flowing. Would this well have caused it to move more in that direction and cause harm to others? Was the concern.
Well, that was one of the concerns.
That's one of the concerns, that's that concern. And without drawing that water out of the ground, it eliminates that as a concern. That, one issue, so.
Well, when you say that, you mean, that, that being the only issue about the plume?
Yeah.
Well, there's the other issue about the plume, about whether or not the construction of moving large amounts of wa, of soil around can... You don't think there's a lot of, to that?
It doesn't address that at all, but I don't think that it'll affect the plume. It affects water quality, because you start digging, and you could cause things to move from the soils into the groundwater. As you're moving soil, you're not, you're not bringing water, you know, pollutants from way over here in the groundwater over here, because you're digging. You're loosening this up and causing soils to get into people's wells, you can cause solids to start flowing through, uh, the groundwater.
So, can I ask you another question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert on this.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just thinking it through as, as we're talking about it. I'm just wondering, um, how folks feel about the whole point of the soil being contaminated and building, let's just say the soil is contaminated, okay? With arsenic and, the, the earlier contamination, as I understood, was arsenic and lead. And, but let's say that's true. Are there any concerns about building on a site without remediation of that? Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
There's always that concern, yeah. How are they going to address that? So that doesn't, what they're addressing doesn't address that. But I thought that was a pretty big.
Yeah.
Offer, and the township engineer, I think it's your firm, no?
It's OHM.
The other, okay, was already exploring that and was indicating that the timeframe might not please the developer. You know, all of the steps that have to be taken. So this is not a slam dunk. I don't want to reply, but it's something, that's what they're considering. So I thought that was pretty cool, and that you guys all should know, and so should they.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's, it's really interesting, and it may just be, it, it's not going to go anywhere fast.
Not going to go anywhere fast, probably faster than the township wants to move, slower than the developer wants to.
All right, well, thanks. That's a, that's a good report. All right, anything else?
Move to adjourn. Can I do it now?
You want to support that?
Support.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we adjourn at 11:51.
Not a record.
All that's left.